Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Tonight, we are starting with a council workshop. And this evening, we do have a workshop on the next step for the draft ordinance amendments to the City Code, Chapter 204, reading of the April 1st Emergency Moratorium on the Clearcutting of Trees. And tonight, we do have with us Planning Director Emily Cole Prescott and the Maine Forest Service District Forester Shane Dugan. And where this is a workshop, this is open discussion with council.
Thank you. So I'll just invite the Forest Service representatives here to sit at the table with us. Thank you for introducing them as well. We have Shane and Oliver here. I'll let them give you information on their titles and positions with the Forest Service. We actually received correspondence from them right after the moratorium went into effect. I shared that email with all of you. And so this evening is an opportunity for some Q and A. I know some counselors have forwarded along questions that we've since also sent along to these folks. So thank you for being here.
Thank you. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Would any of members of council like to proceed first or have any questions for the foresters? We did submit some emails prior to tonight's workshop asking some questions. Council Berman.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. Thank you for being here. Really appreciate it. I'm wondering if you could just start giving us an overview of what the state law covers in terms of timber harvesting, in terms of tracking, in terms of enforcement, especially regarding situations where there's a change of use, where it's going from currently forested or undeveloped property into a use for housing. I think that's really where our attention is focused.
Okay. We could probably spend the whole evening talking about all the aspects that we regulate in the state. But in general, Maine Forest Service regulates all commercial timber harvesting in the state of Maine through several statutes and several chapters within statute. We regulate the size and arrangement of clear cuts. We can regulate in certain municipalities, depends on their choices, but we regulate timber harvesting in the shoreline zone. We regulate liquidation harvesting. Where, and your question is sort of how, tracking and enforcement, we track all the timber harvests in the state of Maine using a Forest Operations Notification System. Under that chapter, any harvest with a few, other than a few exemptions where wood is being harvested and commercially sold, they have to file a piece of paperwork. It's not a permit, but they file a piece of paperwork with the state called a Forest Operations Notification that gives us the location and details of timber harvests. So using that information, we track timber harvest statewide. There's 11 district foresters like myself and Oliver here, and I don't know how many forest rangers we have now, somewhere in the neighborhood of 40, that do harvest inspections and are available to answer questions that come at us. The ranger crew does a pretty good job. They try and get on every harvest in their district. It gets a little harder every year, staffing and whatnot, but they try to do inspections on almost every harvest in the district. So that gives us a lot of eyes on. The district foresters are mostly responsible for our regulations for harvesting. The rangers are responsible for enforcing laws for law enforcement officials with guns and badges, and they look after like spark arrestor law and trip tickets and boundary line laws, things like that. Any of the regulation stuff that goes to harvest pattern and arrangement or shoreline zone or other regulated resources comes to district foresters, and we look after that stuff.
And on the notification, on the notification, they have to indicate whether they're going to change the land use or not. So that's how we would track that. And if the developer doing the harvesting is not primarily interested in the timber business, but is a real estate developer, would that fall into your purview? Would that trigger these kinds of notifications? Well, yeah, if anyone's harvesting timber, like he said, except for the few exemptions, they have to file a notification. And on that, if they are changing the land use, they should indicate, or change the land use, how many acres, if so, you know, what are you changing it to? And land developer would say to housing or something like that.
The few exemptions for the Operations Notification Law are if the timber's being harvested by the landowner and it's not being offered for commercial sale, no notification. If the timber's being harvested, if the acreage is less than two acres and they possess a building permit from the town, no notification. Incidental tree removal, like hazard trees and right-of-way maintenance, no notification. Other than that, if wood's being cut in the state of Maine, the law says they're supposed to file a notification. And like Oliver said, to finish up on sort of tracking, the other way to track is we, the district foresters, get a list of all the notifications in our district every month. And my standard, my habit, and I'm pretty sure it's standard, is I go through that and identify anything that looks interesting, if you will. So conversions, if they're going to convert from one land use to another, which is what you're, we're going to talk a lot about here tonight. Large clear cuts, anyone's proposed to make a clear cut, that kind of raises a red flag in mind, and I'll take a look at that. Or operating around regulated resources, think great ponds, streams, things like that. So I'll go through that and say, oh, okay, I want to check on this, check on this. A lot of times, conversions, so like Oliver said, if you want to convert from timber harvest to some other use within the next two years, the question asks, is the land use going to change from forest management to some other use within two years? If you can say yes to that, you're supposed to tick the box that says, yes, this land will be converted. Say, what's it going to be converted to? You pick it pasture, we commonly see pasture, development, subdivision, Walmart, you know, what have you. Once they tick that box that says conversion, it's no longer considered timber harvesting, so the Maine Forest Service rules no longer apply. Jurisdiction advocates to whoever has jurisdiction over the newly proposed use. So if it's development, it goes to the town and DEP. If, the law also says that they have a two-year period within which to complete that conversion. If, after two years, that conversion is complete, our rules apply again. So if someone says, I'm going to clear 100 acres, I want to put in a trucking complex. Okay. If after two years, half of that is cleared and the other half is growing back to shoots and trees, our rules come back on, and they're subject to the clear cut regulations of whatever would have governed timber harvesting in that area. Does that make sense?
I think so. I do kind of have two maybe follow-up questions. One is, one of the exemptions was if the timber isn't being offered for sale.
Right.
How common is that in terms of a big clearing?
Not very common. You occasionally see, in my experience, I've seen a farmer or, you know, sort of a homesteader kind of a setup that cuts a little bit of wood and runs a little, a small sawmill on their own, cuts rough cut products to build barns and, you know, sheds and things like that. It's not very common at all.
And then just really a clarification, you know, at the change of use, the management changes over to whatever entity manages the new use, that change of responsibility occurs when they file the form, and so you don't follow up with the cutting? Or it changes over at the time the cutting is complete and the new use construction begins? I'm wondering if you manage the cutting during that change of use?
We don't, because the cutting is then, it changes over as soon as they tick that box and file the form, and a copy of that Forest Operations Notification goes to the town in some way, shape, or form, normally to the codes enforcement office, sometimes to the planning office. We have a mechanism by which we share those with the towns. Because, as you can imagine, if it's clearing for development, the town has rules and DEP has rules that govern the, you know, the sort of the size and arrangement of clearing for development. Those aren't our rules, we don't regulate them. And it would be odd if it was, we watched the timber harvest, and then we said, okay, here, have it, and they had cut beyond, you know, what the town would allow. So that mechanism is instant for that.
That's great. And as we're trying to understand what the role of the city is, that understanding that transition is really, I think, where we might want to dig in and understand more.
Yeah, I think so.
And do our work. Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else other? And again, this is open forum. You do not need my, for me to address you.
I'd like to speak up if I could. Thank you for coming tonight. Very helpful to have you here, and I appreciate the effort that you've made to be here. You've answered a lot of my own questions here. I think one of the concerns, and I was on the roof with the moratorium, was the concern that we, first of all, didn't fundamentally understand the roles of the municipality and the Maine Forest Service. So I appreciate the clarification this evening. And the fact that we do have, I have no interest in pushing forward any regulations that are any stronger than what you have, so that's an important statement to make as well. But what I'm really concerned about is that, first of all, we fully understand the roles of Maine Forest Service and the municipality. As I'm thinking through the finality of this step here, that we at least indicate by ordinance reference that there are rules and regulations already in place that draw the attention to your agency where it's appropriate. I do, having been involved in land use planning and planning board activity, it's clear that our planning board, when they're looking at site plan review, I think do a pretty effective job of talking about clearing parcels, retaining, you know, retaining trees, adding buffering, those kinds of things. And we have a segment of our, a full segment of our recently accepted comprehensive plan that deals with environmental issues, including the preservation of trees. Have you had any experience with any other municipalities about their efforts to try to create this harmony between comp plan and tree removal, so we don't overstep our bounds and respect that there are rules in place?
It's a good question. There's a few, there's a handful of municipalities in the region that I cover that have town forestry rules that regulate stricter than the state's rules. Most notably, Sweden, the town of Sweden has quite strict forest regulations, which they just spent a great deal of money to go through and clean up. They hired another forester to go through and sort of clean that up, because at first, the first chance they had to try and enforce those, they discovered they were pretty unenforceable. The definitions weren't clear. It wasn't clear who would enforce them, who they had on staff. They didn't have a licensed forester on staff, needed to find a licensed forester. After that experience, they decided they would hire someone to sort of go through and streamline that for them. Other than that, I know South Portland has invoked like a tree protection ordinance, which was largely aimed at protecting heritage and legacy trees. It does sort of leak over into forest management in that the way the definitions are, it's been a while since I read it, but the way the South Portland definitions go, it's, I think I have a note, it's, the removal of trees, 10 inches or more, so significant trees, they consider 10 inches or more, so they regulate, if you're going to remove more than 10 trees, 10 inches or greater in diameter than those trees, then that's regulated by this ordinance. In retrospect, we've come to find out that, as we discussed earlier, there's a process by which towns, that towns are supposed to follow to invoke a stricter forestry ordinance, is 8869 process through the legislature, or through the, well, the legislature runs it through us, where the Maine Forest Service reviews towns' proposed stricter rules. That didn't happen in that South Portland case, which sometimes happens. We don't enforce things at the statutory level. So they invoked ordinances. Our advice to them is that that may open them up to liability, because they didn't follow the process. So that, it'll be interesting to see if that ever gets challenged. It happens way above my head, obviously. But having not gone through the proper process, there's a liability there that says that in court, that might not stand.
Another thing also, Maine Forest Service, we can't, we cannot assist towns in, you know, enforcing their ordinances. So we can't, you know, assist the town in measuring basal area to see if, you know, someone cut, you know, more than an ordinance they were to enact. So something to remember.
Good, thank you. So I'm not, personally, I don't want to speak for the rest of the council, but I'm not interested in going down those paths of rules that are in excess of what we already have. I'm just interested in making sure that our ordinances that do reference tree cutting are clear enough to those who are trying to clear cut trees, that they have rules they have to abide by, they may have notifications they need to file, whatever the case may be, and that we as a, in our ordinance have, and we already do have, the ability through site plan review to inject some level of control over that. So I appreciate you stepping forward, and I appreciate the communication you made directly to our city planner. I personally have a lot of confidence in the quality of our staff and the planning office, so all I would ask is that, as this thing moves forward, that if you could be available for consultation if need be.
Of course, yeah. And thinking about it, I don't know if it was enacted, a number of years back, I saw some proposed language from another municipality, and like I said, I don't know if it was enacted, but over this sort of same issue about how to, you know, where timber harvesting ends and where, you know, sort of the clearing for development rules begin, their proposed language is sort of an if-then kind of scenario. And within their regs, it said, if, or they proposed to say, if a landowner indicates on the Forest Operations Notification that they intend to change the use, then insert whatever you want on the town side. And, you know, then they were going to look for a permanent review and things like that. But they had proposed a sort of if-then language, so that it was clear in the town statutes, you know, so you could maybe miss that if you just came at it from, I'm going to cut some wood, I filled out this state, you know, Maine Forest Service Forest Operations Notification, and then I'm going to move forward. There was a solid, if you read the town regs, it said, oh, if I do that, then I'm subject to these other regs. Yes, you may.
If I can, just a note on that. So we will get, the city will get notified of the notification form, but we will not have a, there's no guarantee we're going to have a response time to respond to that. So we may get notified, it's my understanding, on a Monday morning, we may get an email. Someone may be clearing that day or that afternoon. So I just want to make sure that we're, there's, right now, there's not an opportunity for a comment and review process. If we wanted to regulate change of use for clearing for development at a certain acreage, let's say two acres, then we could request that that comes through the city, through a local review process, provided that we exempt timber harvesting. But I just want to make sure it's clear that it's not like a traffic movement permit, like we get a lot of time from the DOT to comment, we're going to get notified, and then they might be out that same day, clearing. So, thank you.
And if I understand correctly, once they check that change of use box in the form moves to the city and ends up in, in our Cole Prescott's box, then the Forest Service regulations no longer apply.
Correct.
Right? So there's no duplication or exceeding Forest Service regulations at that point? That's up to the city to regulate what we want to do as part of that development at that moment?
Yeah, because they've indicated that that's going to no longer be managed as forest land, now it's, pick a use, it's whoever governs that particular use.
And you have no role in approving or not approving. You are simply notified, you pass that notification along to the city, and any review, care or regulations you want at that point, entirely our responsibility. And at that point, it wouldn't trigger this process that you've described of going through the state process, because we're not regulating timber harvesting or forestry anymore, we're now regulating development and the tree cutting that's involved in that.
Correct. Putting every, drawing a bright line between timber harvesting and then, and I think the old zoning laws used to have a, there was one section was timber harvesting, and then the other section was cleverly titled, removal of vegetation for reasons other than timber harvesting. And putting everything, you know, making a bright line between those two things, such that as long as that conversion box is checked, then yeah, that's all town on that side.
And I think those two issues have gotten confused in some of our earlier conversation. The clear cutting for timber harvesting is regulated by you. What we might call clear cutting or removal of vegetation for other purposes, I think you just phrased it.
Yeah.
Is not regulated by you or your agency.
Right. We're very careful not to use the word clear cutting. We try, when it's clearing for development, clear cutting in our world has a very specific definition.
Right.
Both civil culturally and from a regulatory standpoint. So we try and draw the line, like, clear cutting happens on the forestry side and clearing for development happens on the town side.
Okay. But there may be room for us to create ordinances about clearing for development that do not require this additional process.
Right.
Because they're not regulating timber harvesting, that are not over, they wouldn't be over-regulating timber harvesting or creating requirements for timber harvesting in excess of your requirements, because there are really two separate lanes here.
Exactly right.
Thank you. That's a good clarification. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Just a clarification question, if I can. So if I'm understanding correctly, once the box is checked, it's basically in the city's or the town's hands for whatever we want to do, and it's our local ordinances.
Correct.
And I think with the conversation, because I was in the audience, the planning board when this came up, if I understand the spirit, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but I think the spirit of the conversation was that, say, someone puts in a project that involves cutting down a certain amount of trees, and there's, it's a project where there looks like to be a life to the project. In this case, I think it was like a solar farm. And I think someone used the hypothetical that, okay, give it 30 years, give it 40 years, maybe the life of it's gone, maybe the technology's improved, it's no longer needed. And I think the question at hand was, if they've checked the box and it goes to the city level, and we have our own ordinance that essentially says that they, that the owners, before they have to sell it or whatever, do maybe reinstate maybe half the trees or trees over a certain size, is there a level where the state would ever or trees over a certain size, is there a level where the state would ever be in a position to retake authority over that land, or when they check it off, it's gone from state authority in perpetuity? And I think that the reason is because, you know, at Council Hatch's point, we're not looking to actually do something as strenuous as South Portland, which is, you know, which either is like a tree growth or reinstate the entire forest, but just in terms of regulation, you know, would it ever go back to the state control, or once it's gone, it's gone to us, basically?
Well, I think-
Realistically, you know.
If they didn't, if they didn't complete the project or have it well underway within two years.
I see.
Then it rolls back on and say if it, if it did exceed clear cut regulations, then we would, you know, pursue that for a clear cut violation.
Okay, so, but imagine the project's done, again, time passes, then-
In your hypothetical situation, think about the, like, whatever the life expectancy of a solar farm is, in 30 years, if they remove all of that material and plant trees and begin to manage that as a forest again, that becomes our jurisdiction again. So it's not like it, it's not a deed etat, we're not anything that follows that property for perpetuity, it's based on use. I think when this was all inceptioned quite a long time ago, we weren't thinking about projects that had an end date like, like solar development, things like that. Conversions were normally to development of some kind, houses or some kind of commercial development. But in theory, if it goes back to, if that project runs its course and whatever infrastructure's there is removed or abandoned and it comes back to a forest, and someone wants to manage it as a forest, we regulate forest management.
And as a follow-up though, say it got to that point where we as a city, you know, wanted to see it basically return to some form of a forest, would we be under any state guidelines in terms of the size, the type of trees though, or is it just pretty much up to us, and then once it gets to that point, you regulate whatever? Say it's, say they all cut down nothing but oak, and then, but a person decides to plant birch or something, though, it's like, do we have to go in and basically remove it and make sure that the original type of trees were there?
Nothing on our end, no.
Okay, okay. Which is good, that's refreshing to know. Thank you, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Emily, do you need any clarification from council?
Yes, ma'am.
What they're looking for now, or any specifics?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So if I, if I could summarize what, what we're doing in, in the planning department based on listening to the April 10th discussion, this discussion, seeing some of the questions, we're writing something that's going to start regulating at two acres to be in line with when a change of notification, a change of use notification form would be filed with the Forest Service. That would request that, that plan or clear cutting or, or clearing up to two acres be regulated under some sort of planning board review, probably through the site plan review process, because it's probably going to be regulated anyway. So I think what council's trying to do is close out the, close out what now is an option where we see sometimes developers maybe come get a notification form, fill out the notification form through the Forest Service, clear the land, and then they don't do the development, or maybe it's many years down the road before the development is done. So it sounds like that's what we are looking to regulate, and I think that's much more clear now to us than it was when this was first brought forward. What we're looking at is a chapter 204 revision, because that is what the moratorium called out as the chapter we're looking to revise. And there would be, excuse me, two sections of that. One would reference a planning board process, and then one would reference a, just the normal public trees, so it'd almost be like two sections of the same chapter.
And I know this may require additional time, but the Conservation Commission, as you know, at their last meeting, was discussing conservation developments and ordinances around protection of resource and resource zones, including forest. And I think we'd like to see that over time also, that when there is this process of clearing for development, that habitats and natural resources are considered as part of that process, perhaps with involvement of, of the Conservation Commission.
So that, yes, and they are supposed to be considered part of that process already, but we certainly enjoyed that conversation with the Conservation Commission, and we're working on that as part of cluster or conservation subdivision, open space, whatever the term is going to land as, as well as a landscape ordinance update, and we will have a low-impact development package, ordinance package for you at some point.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, does that clarify on your end?
I just, I want to make something really clear, just because I, I feel like I'd be remiss if this wasn't very clear. Part of that, that forest notification process, which as of a year ago for us is fully online now, so it's, it used to be a paper form that went through the mail and came back, and now it has to be all filled out incomplete online before that notification is issued. But there's no lag time between the issuance of that notification and the beginning of harvest. So the day you click send and we accept that notification for a harvest, they can start harvesting that day. The town CEO gets an email, auto-generated email, that indicates that a notification's been filed in town. We've also created a dashboard for the Saco, for the planning department, they're going to get a notification of that now too. So it's real time, as soon as that's approved, an email will go to the CEO, an email goes to the planning department as well, so they're aware that some clearing is going to begin.
Okay, does that answer everyone's questions for this evening, and gives Emily a rundown to start the process and get this back to us?
Thanks, thanks again for coming, we appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So that will adjourn the workshop. Okay, so moving on tonight, this will now take us to, welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, April 22nd, 2024. Let the record reflect, the meeting is starting at 6:55. Ann, would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, with its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating justice, sorrow.
That was added on the workshop, but I have moved it down to the council, so the items tonight will be one-off, to follow our normal process. Okay, so that now takes us to item number three, and that is the recognition of all members present this evening. We do have all members of council, including City Administrator John Banco. Item number four, there is no general this evening. Item number five, committee correspondence to council, is there any correspondence? Okay, not seeing any. That now takes us to item six, and that is public comment. We do have one person signed up, and that is David Aronston. Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to address council.
Thank you. David Aronston, 4 Baxter Lane in Saco. And I just really came tonight to say thank you, not just to the council, but to the city. I am a member of the Mary's Walk Planning Committee, and our 26th annual event was, took place yesterday. And really, in many respects, it, it was emblematic of what we've done for more than two decades. There were more than 1,000 people who participated. There was a huge number of people from the city that helped us participate and, and put the event on, from the mayor, the police, Public Works, Parks and Rec Department, the Saco Bay Rotary, and some of the intersections. Teachers, former colleagues of mine from Thornton Academy, and certainly Thornton Academy itself, helped us to put on what we think is a truly important event for the city. So I wanted to say thank you. I also wanted to let the city know, and let everyone know, that we managed to raise more than $210,000 yesterday. And that money will go to cancer research, and it will stay in the state of Maine. So on behalf of myself and the committee, I just wanted to say thank you again.
Thank you, David. It was an amazing event yesterday. To have over 1,000 people show up on a makeup day nonetheless was pretty outstanding. Thank you for that, I appreciate it. Okay, if there is anyone else wishing to address the council, please step up to the podium and state your name and address.
Hello, I'm Mary Martin, I'm Chair of the Ecology School Board, I'm a resident of Mechanic Falls, and I first want to thank you for this opportunity to address the Saco City Council. The Ecology School Board of Directors is committed to being a good neighbor and a contributing, contributing member of the Saco community, which includes providing more than $350,000 of in-kind programming to Saco schools, supporting Saco's economic development, annually paying over $11,000 in property taxes for staff housing, and meeting our obligation to work with the City of Saco and Maine DOT to design and construct a left turn lane at the Simpson-Buxton Road intersection. In the journey that the City of Saco and the Ecology School have taken together, there have been many constants and a few changes. A constant has been that the board and the leadership of the Ecology School have been steadfast in their desire to work with the City of Saco on the left turn lane. Following the conditions of approval, the Ecology School contracted with Ransom Consulting and later with Sebago Technics on the design for that left turn lane. The Ecology School has dedicated more than $60,000 to the design and set aside $250,000, $225,000 as a financial guarantee to that project. The Ecology School continues to look at alternative funding sources, but we were unsuccessful in seeking federal funds to finance the project. In the 2022 discussions that began on the BPI, and then in October, the council voted to move forward with the BPI, which now has been, been approved by Maine DOT. Again, throughout this process, we have made sincere efforts to move this project forward, and our commitment to work in the partnership with the city has not changed. What has changed is the planned Main Turnpike Exit 35, which will increase traffic volume on Route 112. In August of 2023, Sebago Technics conducted a traffic study, and traffic engineer Brad Lyons, and later vetted by Sewell Engineering, stated that a left turn lane is warranted, independent of the traffic generated by the Ecology School. In funding a third of this project, Maine DOT has recognized the need and is ready to join the Ecology School and the City of Saco to take collective responsibility for the safety issues on Route 111, on Route 112, and to make that left turn lane a reality. The board and leadership of the Ecology School have never wavered on the desire to work collaboratively with the city. We are pleased to be able to continue to positively contribute to the community and to have settled permanently at Riverbend Farm, a location that is just miles from where we began in 1998. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alex Grindel, I am the Director of Programs at the Ecology School. I am a resident of South Portland, but I've had the great privilege of working in Saco for the last 22 years, and I just briefly want to follow up on our commitment to working with the Saco schools. We in fact have 50 students with us from Saco Middle School, the third cohort of seventh graders with us for overnight program, learning about watersheds and forest ecology and food systems right this moment. And in fact, a teacher who is coming to say that same thing is chaperoning that trip. So she's there, and we're working on a climate education, professional development, very closely with the Saco schools, so a lot of deepening of that relationship. And the second point I want to, again, briefly make is just simply that safety is our number one priority, and we cannot do what we do without that being our top priority. And that includes how people are coming and going to our site, and so in support of the left-hand turn lane. Thank you.
Good evening, Chelsea Hill, 108 Bradley Street. I'm here to talk about the left turn lane situation at Simpson and Buxton. My understanding as a condition of approval is that the Ecology School was required to fund the installation of a left turn lane at this location due to the negative impact on traffic congestion at the intersection. And I want to reiterate my previous statements, that I find it extremely problematic that the city was so easily able to find over $306,000 for this private business entity's need, when there are known safety conditions within the downtown area of the City of Saco, which just in the last 12 months have resulted in two pedestrian deaths and countless pedestrian and bicycle strikes and injuries. These conditions have gone unaddressed year over year over year. For the last five years, the same intersections appear again and again and again as high crash locations, with no change to the design at these locations. Passive investigations with little to no root cause is completed when a person dies. They crossed without the cross illumination beacon. He didn't see her in the intersection, it was just an accident. When real design changes would certainly mitigate the risk of harm at these intersections to vulnerable roadway users. Crosswalks remain unlit at night, very few pedestrian-activated lighted crossing beacons exist in the city. I'm on the Saco BPAC, but I'm here in my own capacity. And we are piloting some flexible delineators at various locations this year to slow down speeds in the downtown, so that kids can ride to Saco Scoop, or parents can walk their kids to Jubilee Park for music, and enjoy strolling rather than playing Frogger. And repeatedly, we hear how expensive these delineators are. We're also working with the city to procure bike racks at much-needed locations like parks, and cost is our biggest constraint. We are able to fund six bike racks, which is amazing. $306,000 is 6,800 flexible delineators, it's 437 bike racks. Councilor Berman wanted to do some seed money, I forget how much it was in the last budget cycle, for active transportation capital improvements, and it was denied. We show our values in our spending. Taxpayers are being asked to pay for something a private entity was told to do, and that the private entity agreed to do as a part of their business plan. That is what is happening in this instance. It isn't fair to people and organizations and businesses that pay taxes in Saco. Route 112 is a road where so many people live, there are houses up and down this road. The speed limit is very high when you consider how many people live on this road, how close to the road the houses are, and that people, I'm estimating, travel at least 10 miles an hour, if not more fast than that, as a free-flow speed because it's straight and wide and double yellow. I'm sure that some people walk and bike on this road because they are brave, but adding a left turn lane here is simply going to make travel maintain their speed. Now they won't have to slow down at all to maintain their speed and accelerate out of town. Another person who lives in this area last time spoke that they don't want the left turn lane because it will change the rural feel of the street and make it feel more highway-like. Is a left turn lane actually warranted? I do wonder if it is because it feels like something that just keeps cars moving faster and the, and that benefits no one else. Why wasn't something considered to bring the speeds of traffic down to make this road safer? People are safer drivers when they have more time to react to conditions in their environment. While I can't tell the future, I can tell you with 100% certainty that as cars pick up speeds, crashes will continue to happen, and the outcomes will be even more catastrophic than they are right now. Please deeply consider whether or not a left turn lane is really the best solution at this intersection.
Thank you, Chelsea. Anyone else wishing to address the council?
I'm Richard Mercero, I'm from Brunswick, and I'm a volunteer on the board of the Ecology School. I also chair the Development Committee, we call it advancement. And you should know that raising money to support the nonprofit mission is not an easy thing, but it helps when it seems to have the support of the city in which it's a defined asset. Further, as an out-of-town donor to the Ecology School, it's my preference to think that funds I might give will go to the Ecology School's nonprofit mission and not toward solving the City of Saco's traffic problem. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity to address you guys. My name is Patrick Conlin, I live at 79 Granite Street in Biddeford, and as a member of the Biddeford Conservation Commission, I think the Ecology School does great work. I think what their mission is, is, it's fantastic. I kind of wish it was in Biddeford, but, but this issue of the left turn lane and the cost of it is, I pretty much agree with what Chelsea just told you, you know? I feel like- You know, I feel like there's, maybe there's another solution to this. Maybe there's a way that we could calm traffic out there and still make it safer for people to make that left-turn lane with the increased volume of people going to the school. It'd be great if there was a chance to rehash that and probably, and look at some other possibilities. A good friend of mine on the 16th of June last year was hit on his bicycle right there, right at that intersection. I know that they're saying the left-turn lane is to improve safety. I think there's got to be some other solutions that would be less expensive than this, that would also help to calm traffic. So I'd really appreciate, that would be my suggestion, would be as if there's any way to kind of rehash this and look at some other possibilities to make it safer and do some traffic calming at the same time. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Donalee Stockwell. I live on 174 McKinney Road here in Saco. I am the Business Manager for the Ecology School, and I do want to state that we do pay over $11,000 in property taxes. I can also attest that the Ecology School has done its due diligence trying to seek funding to finance the left-turn lane above the Third, and there are no financial institutions willing to finance a state highway project over two miles from our campus. There just isn't any collateral for that. As a citizen, I support the City of Saco in funding one-third of the BPI project for the Route 112 left-turn lane, and I appreciate that my state and my employer, and I hope that the city that I live in as well, will support the BPI to make my commute to my employment safe one. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Jim LaBelle with the Chamber of Commerce. That was an interesting idea from Patrick, maybe to look at if there are other ways to solve this traffic issue besides the left-turn lane. But I guess I would just say, the vote that you took previously to approve the business partnership was the type of thing the Chamber loves to see, the city, the state, and the developer working together to solve a problem. So I hope that if indeed the left-turn lane is required, partnering always is a better solution. So I guess, you know, if that were to come up as a vote again, I would imagine, you know, some of the same reasons that have been articulated tonight would inform that decision. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Inga Brown, 161 Simpson Road. I hope, Council, that you did receive my letter sent last evening. You had a chance to review it. I've also sent a letter, as you perhaps saw, at 4:30 also to the Maine DOT, also outlining and reiterating my concerns about the BPI process and how the Council has some unfinished business. I strongly urge the Council to table, again, your decision this evening on accepting this BPI. The City Council is not the Planning Board, and the Planning Board is not the Council. The turn lane did not come out of nowhere. The turn lane is a site plan condition of approval. If this Council wants to entertain a new traffic study that now shows the Ecology School is not responsible for the traffic conditions, but yet, but rather general traffic is the issue here at this turn lane, which, may I please repeat, this turn lane has never been on the city's radar screen. Director Pat Fox has stood at this podium and said to you, "This turn lane, we don't have issues with this turn lane. This turn lane is not on the Public Works radar screen." However, if there now is a study that Ms. Diane Morabito has confirmed for the city, then that is a change to the site plan condition. It is a different rationale. It is a different reason for this site plan condition. This needs to go to the Planning Board. It pains me to talk about the very continuously incomplete contract zone agreement process here at the city level. When you look at your contract zone agreement, I believe it was in your packet at the October 16th meeting, if you read that contract zone agreement, it does not contain previous and additional site plan conditions of approval for other structures on the property. You do not have, as Council, access to the complete record of the changes to this contract zone. The provenance of the contract zone is lost. You and the citizens only can rely on the Planning Department to provide to you the information, the history of the site plan amendment approvals. The two documents, the contract zone agreement and the conditions of approval and findings of fact, must mirror one another. You are operating in a vacuum without the full record. In my letter to you yesterday, I attempted to provide for you five items that I thought were critical to your Council understanding of the turn lane. Many of you do not understand that the turn lane was a condition of approval. It has nothing to do with the contract zone agreement. When you approve a contract zone agreement, citizens come out, they're upset. What about traffic? What's going to happen in my neighborhood? And what does Council and the Planning Board say? Wait for the site plan process. All of those factors will be addressed then, and they were.
Inga, you are, 40 seconds over.
Thank you. I will wrap it up.
Thank you.
I provided for you the full condition number nine of the turn lane. I provided for you the full history from the Planning Board on the turn lane. You, as a Council, are not the Planning Board. This must go back to the Planning Board. I gave you the hourly traffic grid that the Ecology School suggested and agreed to. I do not understand why the application does not include the Sabago Technics turn lane. Why are there no abutter parcels on that turn lane? The previous schematic included abutter parcels. How can the public engage in this process that is supposed to be public and full community support when you don't even understand whose properties are potentially affected? I'll wrap it up. I would ask you to also ask about right-of-way with this turn lane. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, my name is Ryan Fecto. I live across the bridge over in Biddeford. Good to see you all this evening. I'm not here to tell you what you don't know, but here to speak in favor of the action item related to the BPI. I spent my early childhood here in Saco and had the pleasure of going to the Ecology School as a fourth grader at C.K. Burns. Many fond memories despite the fact that I've now aged, including my desire or my enthusiasm for composting, which I learned at the Ecology School. And I pestered my grandmother probably for several weeks after attending the Ecology School to let me compost in her backyard and was successful in my bid. I guess my persuasion skills were honing themselves rather early, in part thanks to the Ecology School's teaching. I think it's important to recognize that the Ecology School is indeed a nonprofit organization. I actually read over the weekend an opinion article in the Press Herald that suggested the Ecology School was a developer, and I think that term obviously comes with connotation, and with that connotation is kind of a dog whistle calling out some fear. The Ecology School is a nonprofit organization, and nonprofits, as you all know, run on tight margins, tight budgets. They are seeking grant and private donors to fund their operation. Whether it be a nonprofit or a business, most of you probably have experience in the business world or have rubbed elbows with folks who have experience in the business world. You don't typically have a slush fund at your availability at any point to just spend on large expenses that aren't part of the mission or the business. In this case, the BPI takes what the Ecology School, the city, and the state together can offer in order to bring this left-turn lane to fruition. And I think the contract zone, as originally stated under condition nine, stated the applicant will work with the City of Saco and the Maine Department of Transportation to design and construct a left-turn treatment at the Simpson Road-Buxton Road intersection as warranted. I'm not, I did not get a degree in English language, but if I read that condition, I have not in any way interpreted that to mean the Ecology School is solely responsible for a left-turn lane. It says, "The applicant will work with the City of Saco and the Maine Department of Transportation." And sometimes when you work together, you put up dollars together in order to build something. That's sometimes how working together works. And so with that said, I hope that you'll support the BPI, support a great organization that is offering children a great educational lesson here in our community and neighboring communities, and giving students and adults the opportunity to become good stewards of our environment. So I appreciate your time. Thank you. And I was only eight seconds over, so.
Thanks, Ryan.
Good evening, and Happy Earth Day. My name is Leanna, and while I live in Portland, I get to travel every day to Saco as I work at the Ecology School as the Director of Advancement and Community Partnerships. My primary focus is fundraising for the Ecology School, and with some really dedicated efforts from my team, just since 2018, the Ecology School has fundraised over $350,000 to provide programming, free of charge, to local students and teachers right here in the Saco community. We are really so proud of this endeavor and understand this important commitment to the city and with Saco schools. Our team has found success with funders and individual donors really appreciating the opportunity to contribute to the impact of innovative educational experiences at Riverbend Farm. As an expert in this field, I can tell you that there are not potential funders, whether they be foundations, corporate sponsors, or individual donors who are willing to contribute to this construction of a state highway left-turn. The priority of my team is to collaborate and build upon funding partnerships to continue providing incredible learning experiences in conservation, education, agriculture, to students, teachers, families, right here in Saco, free of charge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Peter Van Hemel. I'm an attorney at Bernstein Schur, here on behalf of the Ecology School. I will certainly not take three minutes and want to be respectful of the Council's time. I know this is your process, and so if there are questions that come up during the later part of the proceeding that would benefit from further explanation, please let me know. I think you've heard a very helpful summary in support of the project. I think you have a very well-prepared Council briefing and recommendation from staff, and I think I will summarize just a couple of the high points that I've heard and try to explain and put some context around some of these remarks. First, sometimes a left-turn lane is just a left-turn lane. So I just offer that for analysis, that there may be a sort of layer of complexity around this, which takes the attention apart from the essential issue, which is that this is a traffic-study-supported engineering improvement, which has strong recommendations behind it by professionals. It has the support of the Maine Department of Transportation, and it has a very successful application of the BPI, which is sort of a model program, a very desirable program. And this could be a great example for the City of Saco, as Mr. LaBelle has pointed out, in terms of its ability to collaborate, work with property owners and interests that advance the city's benefits. And as to the historical requirements, they have been correctly summarized here as the requirement to work with the city and MDOT, and there's a very somewhat obvious, but perhaps lost, explanation for that, which is that this is a public space, and a requirement upon a private party to build a turn lane is, they can't do that. They can't go out and start digging and moving traffic and diverting things and putting up cones. This space is very heavily regulated, and the only parties that can actually perform the work are the town or MDOT. And so it's always been a requirement to work with the city because the applicant cannot undertake the project on its own. And so in working with the city, which was the requirement, there's been a considerable amount of participation and cooperation from the applicant, and a very good level of working with that has come back from the city and MDOT. And in fact, the BPI has been, I think, a wonderful example of the parties working with each other in a way which, again, can really be a model for this community. So I'll yield the rest of my time and thank the Council for its attention. And again, if there's any further information or explanation that is necessary when the item is under consideration, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jeannie Hay, 166 Simpson Road. I live very close to the Ecology School, right next to Inna Butter. I want to thank all of you, not just for listening to me, but for the work that you do. I'm so impressed with people who give to public service like you do. I also want to recognize that many of my neighbors are here and that we disagree on this issue, and I want to tell them that I care about them, I value them, I respect them, and I disagree with them. But I, of course, respect their right to have an opinion different from my own. I have not done a traffic study. I do drive or ride my bike on this road and into this intersection nearly every day of the year, and it is my observation that the need for the turn lane is not connected to traffic from the Ecology School at all. The danger of that intersection is the speed that cars are going on Route 112. And in fact, to the extent that the Ecology School has increased any traffic, that's mostly connected to a few employees but school buses that now grace our road a couple of times a week and who drive very slowly. The biggest change in traffic on our road has been since the bridge that covers Stackpole Creek was fixed and rebuilt many years ago, which was in fact a private-public partnership between our community, other supporters, and the City of Saco. So that was an example of the kind of partnership that is being proposed here. Finally, I'd just like to say on this Earth Day that the Ecology School promotes the stewardship of our earth and our planet in the most local way possible. I loved Ryan Fecto's story about how he became a composter after going there as a fourth grader. That's exactly how we're going to save the earth, is one young mind changed at a time that leads to habits. The origin documents never said that the Ecology School had to build this left-turn lane alone, and a nearly million-dollar expenditure on their part will take really important funds away from their ability to teach young people about the beauty of the earth and the desperate need to preserve it, and I'm very proud to have it in my community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings. Bill Doyle, 48 Ross Road. Madam Mayor and distinguished members of the City Council, let me start by thanking you all for your service and commitment to our community. With that, I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Ecology School and As a former councillor in 2015, my thoughts in connection with the Contract Zone was the city would have to pay a portion down the road to help build the left-hand turn lane, as described in Section 9, as we've heard tonight. As the Contract Zone was agreed to, the council required the creation of trails for the general public. The Ecology School completed those trails and opened them to the public. Due to the beautiful views and expansive trails, the public has and continues to utilize these public benefits. I also like to remind council that end citizenry of Saco, in 2015, the Stackpole Bridge was closed to traffic for being unsafe. The council had several options to fix the bridge and ultimately did. By fixing the bridge, the council opened up a thoroughfare for traffic from out of town. Some of the same citizens opposing this left-hand BPI, which, again, includes funding from the state government, who says, yes, this is a good project, so grants from the state, had no problem using approximately $400,000 of additional city funds to repair Stackpole Bridge. The council moved money from the paving budget to cover those additional costs. Don't believe me? Check the December 21, 2015 meeting minutes. Read it for yourself. Let us not forget about the cultural and business impacts that the Ecology School has brought to the City of Saco and partnerships with our schools. National, state, and local governmental agencies and officials having functions up at the Ecology School gives back three times the amount of property tax in school program. Let us not forget, the Merrell property only gave about $17,000 at that time in taxes to the city. We get over $50,000 in school programming, and that's in addition to just general meetings and these cultural and, excuse me, and significant folks that they bring to our community with businesses and so forth. And again, continues a great 20-year partnership that allows for opportunity for students to learn and grow. So again, for all these reasons, please look past the partisan agendas and rhetoric and support the BPI agreement, because, again, the state is giving you money. Let's not say no. Let's take that money. Let's improve our road system, and let's give safety enhancements. Thank you very much.
Any other members wishing to speak?
Hello, everyone. I'm Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street. You have always known my position to process accountability and compliance in Saco's state, federal laws and regulations. Please do not approve this BPI. Do not instruct Administrator Bohenko to sign this BPI agreement. Why? I'm going to do several bullet points very quickly in my three minutes. Council will be ignoring circumventing or violating local and state laws and setting precedents, directly legal implications to the Ecology School's CZA and 2018 site plan approval. BPI application omissions of required key materials needed for the state traffic engineers' considerations were not provided. Main Sensible Transportation Policy Act ignored and violated by the city required public engagement is still muzzled. I now question if Hancock lumbers BPI was compliant. I now question the state traffic engineer, whose judgment was overturned in a recent citizen TMP appeal and who is also now involved in the BPI requirements which are incomplete. Citizens are having to bring forth grievance hearings, CZA appeals, M.TMP reconsideration and appeal for lack of due process. We are now having to include MDOT's Commissioner Van Note due to noncompliance of TMP and now BPI rules and regulations. The Planning Board and 2018 decision that the applicant will work with the City of Saco and MDOT to design and construct language was never financial, never. It was based upon obtaining required permits during design, construction, and monitoring, costs being borne by TES. Left-hand turn lane is a required site plan condition, number nine, needed for approval. Citizens are not involved financially. Contract zones are all pre-2021. All contract zones pre-2021 are in grave issue right now. Planning Board has never reviewed TES' recent independent one-day study. Planning Board needs to do their job. Ms. Morabito's 42622 memo states left-hand turn lane was met and warranted in 2021 due to the school stating. There is no need to count 112 and Simpson Road again since the warrant has been met and the school is proceeding to design and construct the required left-turn lane. Ransom's concept number one included BPI requirements concerning abutters. What land would be taken? MDOT's BPI application, concept number two, omissions of the abutters. When council voted in October to move forward with the BPI, I personally believe you gambled at our detriment that the state would not approve BPI grant due to location, nonprofit status, and site plan approval conditions. Where is the executed sub-agreement for your review? The previous LOC calculations of $225,000 were based upon $300,000 construction costs. With that same math today, less the state's one-third in your documents, the sub-agreement's number-one blank line should state $462,350.25 minus the $225,000 due LOC, TES LOC, is therefore $237,350.25 is due to the city. Bailouts of developers who agree to site plan conditions but fail to complete them as they enjoy growth with land and house purchases, expanding payrolls and programming and infrastructure additions is a dangerous precedent that council should avoid. Omission of key facts in BPI application and complete municipal process prior to the submission of the application, lack of notice, and due process, abutters missing. Saco should not set a precedent that businesses can agree to certain terms in order to secure approval and then shoulder taxpayers with the financial burden of those terms once up and operating. Do not accept this BPI. It remains the Ecology School's contractual requirement. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Okay, it does not appear that we are, anyone is seeking recognition. So we are now moving on to Item 7, and that is the Consent Items. We do have five items this evening, and that is the nomination of election clerks for 2024 through 2026. We have the confirmation of the mayor's appointments to the Shoreline Commission of Jeffrey Onan. The confirmation of the mayor's appointment to the Long Range Planning Committee for Adam Cozy. Confirmation of the mayor's reappointment and appointment to the Planning Board. Reappointment for Matthew Provenkal. And the appointment of Carrie Lynn Lane. And to confirm the mayor's reappointment to the Conservation Commission of Patrick Dempsey and Justin Hill. Is there a motion to pass the consent items?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilor Berman. Any discussion on the items?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Any discussion? Roll call, vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Okay, that now takes us to Item 8, and that is the Action Items. First item this evening is the first reading, Chapter 106, Flood Plane Management Ordinance Revision, and that is Councilor Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Staff have compiled draft ordinance revisions to Chapter 106, Flood Plane Management. These revisions are required by the federal government to maintain the City of Saco's community rating system designation, which, in general, reduces the cost of flood insurance for our residents. Residents can learn more about the new FEMA information by visiting this link, www-main.gov/dacf/flood/mapping.html. Planning staff coordinated with public work staff to create the enclosed map and continues to coordinate additional mapping details in effort to make those revisions as clear as possible for property owners. I move to approve the first reading of the Chapter 106, Flood Plane Management Ordinance Revisions, and further to schedule City Council's public hearing regarding these ordinance revisions on May 6, 2024.
Motion has been made by Councilor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Gunn. Any discussion? Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. Just a typo, if I could offer it up to staff. On page 19 of our packet, under the water course carrying capacity, I'm sorry, F Utilities 1, the last sentence says BAS, and I think it should be BASE as a base flood elevation. So just ask for that clarification. And I'm convinced that Emily put that in there to make sure we read this. So I read it, and I found it. So there you go. Thank you.
Assistant Administrator, do you have that note?
Perfect, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, not seeing any other discussion or questions. Roll call, vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Okay, that now takes us to Item B, and that is the item tabled April 1, 2024. Is there a motion to remove from the table?
So moved.
Motion to remove made by Councilor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Gunn. Roll call, vote. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
No.
Motion to untable passes 6-1. Okay, so that is one reading of the Ecology School Business Partnership Initiative, the BPI, for the left turn lane on Route 112, and that is Councilor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. On October 16, 2023, the council approved city participation in the Route 112 churn lane construction project, and required staff to apply for the MDOT Business Partner Initiative Grant Program. Furthermore, council's motion caps city participation in this project to be $308,233 of the estimated $924,700 total project cost. On March 20, Saco received notification from Maine DOT that the BPI application request had been approved. On April 10, the City Council tabled this item in order to get a left churn warrant review. A copy of the left churn warrant review from Diane Morabito, P.E., is attached as Exhibit 1, in which she stated conclusion of Sabago Technics that left a left churn lane is warranted on Route 112 to serve traffic churning onto Simpson Road under existing conditions without Ecology School traffic is correct. I move to approve the city's financial contribution of up to $308,233 to the Route 112 churn lane construction project in the fiscal year 2025 budget process.
Motion has been made by Councilor Archer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Gunn. Any discussion? Councilor Johnston?
Thank you. Well, for starters, I do appreciate members of the public on both sides that have come forward tonight. It's never easy, and it's always invigorating from my standpoint to actually have people in the audience, regardless of how you feel. I've been clear my stance on this from the get-go, and as I stated, it's not easy sitting up here with these decisions. My prior decisions were not determined based on whether I liked the Ecology School or didn't like the Ecology School. I've stated many times, I think they provide, you know, a great resource and asset to the community. However, I think, well, I guess I get to a point I think we need to address. I voted to keep this on the table because I think it should remain tabled. I believe that members of the public have raised serious concerns that I share, separate to the question of the turning lane, just about the actual overall process that we've undertaken here. We have consistently, year after year, and I know we're working on trying to address these issues, but we've consistently had issues with contract zones, site plan requirements, and how they all come together in a symbiotic approach. And after reviewing this and several other amendments to that site plan over the years, I've been concerned from my standpoint at council level, because, and while I will admit, every single one of our contract zones is written differently, and that probably in there lies the problem that we see year after year. I can recall on another contract zone, a sizable contract zone on the Portland Road, where for years subdivision amendments were made, site plan amendments were made, it never rose up to council until I actually caught the wording in the documents that indicated that those were amendments to the contract zone and therefore they need to come forward. They did in 2019. They haven't since, and I'm aware that there's been many more amendments to that contract zone. So, and again, that's separate, but there has been instances with the Ecology School's contract zone and site plan that has had amendments, such as the addition of the Yerkes. And I'm not saying that that isn't authorized. My concern is, do we have a legal opinion on it? Because as we potentially move into a partnership with TESS, we, in my opinion, now assume some liability here as a direct partner. I would argue we're already a partner with the contract zones, and we really owe it to our citizenry to ensure that all the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted before further going down this path. Like I said, if it comes back, if we deal with it later, I'll address the actual expenditures of dollars, but I am curious to know how the rest of council feels on this, or if we have a legal opinion. As has been, again, we received a notice yesterday, and we have since then, and now the state has also been notified, so I personally don't feel comfortable moving forward further tonight with the understanding that, again, we've seen it, we've got several cases right now going out there. I wouldn't be surprised if this heads down that same path, so, thank you.
Councilor Berman?
I think Councilor Gunn had his hand up first.
Thank you, Councilor Berman. It was just more of a point of order, really, before we get into discussion. The way I'm interpreting this, it looks like it's supposed to be one motion, not two votes, though. Wouldn't it be not proper for Counselor Archer to continue reading? So it is just one vote? I mean, that's my interpretation of how it's structured.
Yeah, we can bring it back, if you want to amend that. I was going to have Counselor Archer reread it as a second motion if needed to.
So there's going to be two votes, or it's just one vote? Just so I'm clear.
As it stands right now, it would be two votes. He can bring it back as a second, or if somebody would like to make the amendment to include it, we can do an amendment and have one vote.
I see.
The motion's already been approved for the first part, not the second.
Was it, if you don't mind me asking, was it intended to be two votes always?
Is it what?
Was it always intended to be two votes?
That I'm not sure. We had three separate, the removal, second, and then possibly the third. He read it as it, two separate motions.
Okay, I see.
That's correct, Counselor, right?
Since Counselor Archer is the resource on this, I'll defer to his judgment on this.
Councilor Berman?
I read this. Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. There's been some question about whether this BPI would change a condition of the site plan approval. And in my mind, that question is clear, and the answer is no. I know there is some belief that as a
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. There's been some question about whether this BPI would change a condition of the site plan approval. And in my mind, that question is clear, and the answer is no. I know there is some belief that as a condition of the site plan approval, the Ecology School was supposed to fund the entire left turn lane. I don't believe that's in the document, especially the entire language, which was sent to us last night. The language that's there is that the Ecology School will work with the City of Saco and Maine DOT to design and construct a left turn treatment as warranted at the Simpson-Buxton Road intersection. Now, of course, we can't enforce, right, these kinds of requirements based on intent or belief of people at the table, and we've already heard and received correspondence that different people who are on the planning board or council at the time had different interpretations of the language. We have to enforce them on the words that were written. That's what was agreed to. And the language I see is silent on who should fund the left turn lane. What it is clear on is the people who should work together. And moreover, when I read the entire language of that condition, what I do see is, is the language isn't silent on funding altogether. It speaks to the need to monitor traffic and clearly states that the Ecology School should pay for that traffic monitoring. So the people who wrote that condition were aware of the need to specify who funds different aspects of those requirements. They were clear about that. They stated the Ecology School should pay for the traffic monitoring. What they did not state is who should fund the costs of the entire left turn lane. They left that to be working with the city and Maine DOT. In my mind, therefore, the city taking over a part of that cost is not changing or modifying the requirement. It's actually living to the letter of that requirement as stated at the time. So I think the question of whether the council now is outside of its lane and modifying the planning board's requirements is a moot question. We are not. We are abiding by the language and the letter of that language in a way that is well within our lane. Now, other people spoke to whether the left turn lane is needed at all. I personally don't believe that it is, but that is outside of our lane, in my opinion. The planning board found that it was a requirement for the project, and therefore it is, until such time as a planning board would revisit and remove that, which they have not. So, well, I don't believe this is, you know, the best use of anybody's money. It is a requirement, and the requirement is that it be paid in coopership, you know, in partnership between the city, the state, and the Ecology School, which is really what we're trying to do here. I have other points to make later, but I'll stop there for now.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilor Archer?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I've got several points, but the first point is when we're talking about when the planning board made conditions that you work, will work with the city, I took that as staff resources, things like that, because nobody other than this council can appropriate funds. So by default, any comment related to them trying to have the city funded is void. So I don't believe in that argument, because, again, only this council can appropriate funds. That's that part, okay? And with this project, I can see both sides. I do think, City Administrator, when do we have to really work with the, like, when's the last date, last meeting in which a signature would be required by the state?
Well, the state has indicated they would prefer to have something by the end of April or first part of May. I've been getting repeat requests for the signature.
Okay, with that in mind, we, I'm for tabling. I'm not making the motion now because I want to hear other people talk. But this is a project that's been going on my seven years. It's a, it's been going on longer than, as we all know. And I see both perspectives. So one perspective is, we hold people who've talked to the planning board and made an agreement, we hold them accountable. We also recognizing that life gets in the way, life changes. And I don't want to blame COVID by any means, but when you're talking about funding nonprofit, profit, stuff happens. So I brought up there 2022, I don't have the 2023 990 report for the Ecology School, and it's public information, so I don't mind sharing it because anybody can grab it. I'm looking at 2022 where they raised 2.1, hold on, let me scroll a little bit. 2.566 million, 646,000, but they had 2.8 million and change in expenses. So that looks like 2022, and if I'm wrong, just give me a heads up. Looks like a net loss of 200 and, I mean, it will tell me if I look at it, 242,000. So I look at accountability, but then I look at a financial capacity. How this came to the city is just strange, my opinion only, just strange. It was a strange request, strange condition, but we ultimately have to make a decision because it has been more than eight years of us just trying to figure this out. I know we all want to look at different ways to approach this. This is why I'm for a table with some deadlines, because we still have the capacity to get more information before we have the ultimate signatory request from the state. There's also the question of, do we need it? And I have, I've thought of that in the last seven years as well. Without pointing blame, but more from a learning perspective, that decision put us, the whole city, everybody, in this weird predicament. And again, I still don't know if I'm, do we need it? If we need it, do we fund it? Do we, does the citizens help chip in? Because really, if you go for someone who's just as of last year, and I don't know the current year, where's the money? How do we come with a solution? There's not a good solution here. And I don't mind sharing it, because this is eight years of us trying to talk about a left-hand churn. I don't know where I stand. It, this is the weirdest one for me. Holding accountability, we, I know there's an appeal out there. There's all this stuff going on. That's why I don't feel we need to make a decision today, because we still have it, we still have a couple more meetings left there. But if we go to BPI, the third, 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 they committed 300,000. I believe when all this was considering, I remember seeing a total project cost of less than 300,000. So what do we do? I'm not here talking about the merits of the school, because I do believe in the school's mission. I'm talking about a strange agreement that was presented and agreed to. So we have accountability to issues. Do we hold you completely accountable? Do we recognize life gets in the way? Do we recognize that there's market factors that we just cannot prepare for? And I would say, yes, that's present. If we hold them accountable, I'm just going to say, if we hold them accountable where they have to cover the whole cost, it's probably not going to get funded. It's probably not going to happen. Where are they going to get the money? After looking at the 990 search and looking at where their funds are at. So what does the city do? Do we sue them? Do we go into litigation? Do we shut them down? I mean, when you think about, what are the options out there? We work together, we don't allow it, or we just say, hey, it was recognized, let's just withdraw that record, that, that part, or we go full throttle and say, Ecology School, you're on the hook for 900,000, you have until November of next year to get it done, and then we have to go to legal? You don't do that to partners. This is such a weird case for me, because I'm on both sides. I hold people accountable. I, I, it's one of the things that, it's a value of mine. You make a commitment, you honor it. But I also recognize, if I held that standard to my children, yeah, I would never, that would not work out well, because you got to be flexible. And that's where I'm in this weird position. I don't mind sharing it, because I see partnership, I see litigation, I see, hey, we really don't need it, and let the planning board decide. But then we also have evidence that's saying it's needed. It's warranted because of future growth. So for months, I've been, eh, when do we first start talking about BPI? It wasn't October, it was prior. I've...
2022.
I'm sorry?
2022.
Thank you. I've been considering that partnership mentality, recognizing it's, it's, it's taking funds away from our taxpayers, from our general fund. I get that. But eight years, nothing's happened? At one point, someone's got to make a decision, come to the table. And like I said, there's four options, and I don't agree with all of them, but like, but that's where we stand, and that's why, if nobody else wants to speak, I'll put a motion to the table if no one else wants to speak.
And just to point out that the first page of the packet, 40, is our updated traffic warrant, which does state that it is warranted now. And that's with, out. I believe the accounts were last year not included with the Ecology School accounts, the way I read it correctly. Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Archer's kind of point at the end, regardless of his earlier point on the fact that we have been waiting so long in this, and the fact that we are, you know, get to this point, I think we have all the information we need. That's why I'm not in favor of tabling it. We have a full quorum here. We can vote on this based on the information we have. And I just, I just want to point out here, without getting into the weeds of anything, I mean, we as a council put in for a BPI with the state back in October. It was a values-based vote that we were interested in doing this, and it was based on the idea of a third, 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 and whatever else extra came up, the Ecology School would be on the hook for. And I think that's more than equitable, given the situation. And remember, I remember the state didn't have to give us a cent. And while it's a separate topic, you know, we're looking to partner with the state on other projects and other things going forward. I mean, not least of all, our shoreline mitigation. Now, we have the Army Corps thing going on, and we're pretty much, that finishes, you know, that major hurdle with the feds. Now, we look at state, we look at state, we look at third party, and look at other things to, you know, mitigate that, not to mention other projects. And the state could be a valuable partner, but, you know, if we're going to make the state stand attention for us, and then, you know, and then basically say, thanks, but no thanks, then the state is under no obligation to help the City of Saco out. And I don't want to be in a position where we start, you know, poisoning the well when we, you know, get to the finish line, having already agreed in principle something's a good idea, but just throw it back at the last moment, because, again, we find ourselves talking into a circle about whether or not, you know, a project is warranted or not, though. These are the parameters. The state has, you know, agreed to it. The state agrees that the turn lane's warranted. I really think, you know, this is a win-win for everybody, though, because it improves the road and improves our partnership with the state, and it shows that, you know, we mean what we say, and we're not going to sort of, you know, talk ourselves back after we already make a commitment to something, at least in principle. And I believe in, you know, sort of, you know, if you're going to commit to something in principle, at least, you know, follow through on it, though. And I think this is a situation where, I can offer all the information I need, though. And I, I think we should just make the decision tonight, and I call on my counselors. You know, this, you know, we've got plenty of the record here. You can make a decision on the merits, one way or the other, but let's, let's put this to bed, one way or the other. Thank you.
Counselor Berman, I believe you had your hand up.
I'll let other counselors who haven't spoken speak first.
Counselor Hewitt?
At first, I, I witnessed the Ecology School when working in the schools and thought they did a fabulous job, and I believe in their mission. I have received contact from some of my constituents, and as one of them pointed out, you know, we keep talking about one-third, one-third, but actually, it's two-thirds on the taxpayers. And when we combine the state and the city amount, we're talking about a total of 616,466 dollars. One of my questions are, if this goes over, which we've seen since the beginning of this planning, that, are the cost increase, who is that going to fall on?
The Ecology School will, will fund that.
How do you hold them accountable to that? Because they were supposed to fund this from day one.
We enter into an agreement. We would enter into an agreement as a result of sub-agreement, which we're going to have to enter into anyways.
Sub-agreement would be written after...
I get that, but my overall point goes back to what Counselor Archer was saying, is that, how is that enforceable?
Well, if I might, Your Honor, I think it's always, to take into account good faith, I would have, I sat across the table from the executive director, and I posed the same question, and he indicated that there was a commitment there, that if it went over, if we had the third, the third, and the third, and it went over, that they would be responsible for it.
Okay, I can appreciate that, but I'm hearing out of one mouth that they can't fundraise, they can't do anything to even get up money above what they already have set aside with that, get the term, financial guarantee. We've seen how these construction costs skyrocket. So if three months from now, four months from now, five months from now, I highly doubt this is going to get done this construction season, it's now 1.5 million. I've been here, around here long enough to know that we'll be right back here going, oh, now I need another 600,000. I mean, that's...
Well, I would, I would think that if they entered into a sub-agreement with the city that articulated their cost over and above the 924,000, and they would be responsible for it, I would assume that they would be responsible for it, because there's other avenues we can take if they're not going to...
Is that, is that something they can get insurance on? I mean, this, these are actual questions, because...
I think sometimes you have to take people, you know, I would have to say it's a good faith effort in terms of, once you have the signed agreement, I would then think that there's probably other avenues we can take if they default on that agreement. I would have to obviously talk to the city attorney about that. But again, I think there's other options that we could proceed to try to get the money.
I've seen good faith multiple times from people for council, and I sit here going, oh, wow, we really missed the language, or how if something's written in the contract over and over again. So I would hope we get this one actually correct.
Well, Counselor, I've been here six months.
I know.
And I just want to respond to you on that. I just want to respond to you on that, if I might. On October 16, the city council voted.
Negative.
The third and third, on October 16.
This, this city council did not.
Counselor Johnston, let...
I'm just clarifying the record. I've heard it twice tonight now. This city council is a new city council. There are two seated members that did not make up the council that voted in favor. That's important for the record. You can't encumber another council, a future council, that wasn't here at the time.
Noted.
Okay.
That's all I have to say.
So that is based on your vote, depending, we can state that the sub-agreement will be made, that will be a condition of the sub-agreement. What happens after the fact, we can't determine. You know, what will happen, happens. But the sub-agreement will be made with the condition that the Ecology School is responsible for anything over or above the third cost. Counselor Berman, then Counselor Hatch, then Archer.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I do want to just make two other points that have come up, I think. One is, is clearly, there is a cost to the taxpayer here, right, a third, a third, a third, as Counselor Hewitt just mentioned, you know, over 300,000 to the city, over 600,000 in total public dollars. You know, as I was thinking about this outlay of funds for this kind of public, you know, infrastructure effort, you know, I was sort of racking my brain for when, you know, the city would spend this kind of money for this kind of traffic movement, when, you know, we've heard from other people that this, this may not be the most important improvement we could make in terms of safety or transit. And my mind did immediately go back to 2016, and this very same Simpson Road and the Stackpole Bridge, which, of course, was funded for a total cost of 1.2 million. You know, it's 1.8 million in today's dollars. The cheapest option at that time was 839,000. So that's about 400,000 of additional public taxpayer dollars that was spent not for safety, not for pedestrians, not for bicycling, not for improving traffic, but really for aesthetics and historical purposes. Now, now, I supported that. That wasn't on council. I supported that as a citizen then, and I would support it again today. I think those kinds of things are important. Those are the kinds of investments we make in that neighborhood to open it back up to traffic, to bring a handful of houses back into city services and emergency access. I think that was important, and I think the aesthetics were important then also. But that's a lot of money that we've already spent on this road, and this is a safety improvement. This is a requirement by the planning board, which that was not. So I have trouble believing that the city could fund that project, but cannot find the money for this project. I think that argument falls a little flat. Second, it was indeed a prior council that approved Option 2 for the BPI. We considered three options at the time and selected Option 2, a third, a third, a third. We could have not moved forward with the BPI. We could have opted to move forward with the BPI with no city cost. That was not the option we took. While that vote doesn't require us to follow course, of course, that prior council can't commit this Second, it was indeed a prior council that approved option two for the BPI. We considered three options at the time and selected option two, a third, a third, a third. We could have not moved forward with the BPI. We could have opted to move forward with the BPI with no city cost. That was not the option we took. While that vote doesn't require us to follow course, of course, that prior council can't commit this council to an action, nor does approving the BPI with that vote necessarily commit us to investing those funds now, I do think reversing the decision of a prior council should be an extraordinary act. Moreover, as councillor Gunn said, we've entered into a partnership with the state. We've asked for BPI. I thought it was a long shot at the time. It's rather extraordinary that the state found this project worthy of funding and dedicated money to it, right? That's a point of celebration. I think it would be both actually foolish to turn down the state money, but it would also make us look a little bit foolish in the eyes of the state and really complicate further attempts at BPI or other kind of economic partnership if this is the kind of city we are, where we ask for money and then, you know, have the city, have the state encumber it for us, and then don't actually engage in the project. I think, really, the prudent path is to not table it. We have the information we need. We can move forward. Just get this done. We're here.
Councillor Hatch, did you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of comments here. Would it be appropriate to get Director Fox up here? I had a couple of questions on budget.
Yep. Director Fox, do you mind stepping forward?
Good evening. Good evening, thank you. A couple of budget items. I'm looking at the total cost estimate of the project, 900 and a quarter, roughly. 35,000 of that, I believe, has been dedicated to right-of-way impacts. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's kind of a standard set aside with the level of design that they've done to date, which is just conceptual.
Okay, so we haven't really confirmed the adequacy of that amount, if in fact we do need to
No, city staff with discussions along the way has tried to confirm that these, this is still an accurate cost estimate based on today's costs, given how fast that they are rising in the construction industry. But we also have tried to confirm, do you see this being constructed within the existing right-of-way? And they can't 100% say yes. So they did leave a line item in there for possible easements or grading rights or negotiations with the butters and whatnot.
And that, my point is, that number could be too low, possibly. I mean, it's
Yeah, but there's, yeah, and there's general contingencies based in there, so that if any quantity or anything changes once they get final survey and elevations, you know, that is tried to, you basically start with a larger contingency to cover factors like that, and then the further you get towards a 100% design, you're able to reduce those. So it should be covered in there.
Okay, thank you. And then, talk to me a little bit about the engineering and construction administration component, which is 125,000. It's, am I correct in understanding that, that your department, given its staffing limits, would have to hire outside assistants in monitoring this project? Is that correct?
Yeah, that was kept in there so that city staff involvement, while the project will flow through city staff for billing, tracking dollars, reaching out to the state with compliance for the overall project, and then distributing funds back to those, to the three parties. There'll be city involvement in that, but the idea was to have an engineer's cost contracted in the overall cost, so it's not going to be the city engineer or a member of my staff tied up for the duration of construction. That's included in the cost.
And those responsibilities that your staff would have to undertake, are they going to be funded some way through this 125, or is that additional cost? I'm just trying to get a sense of the actual cost to the city of Sauk beyond the one-third of this budget. Are you going to have costs that aren't built into this budget?
They will be staff time, like any task that we take on, but it will not be, we will not have to be out on site. That's what that construction administration is. So we'll just be looking for the third-party guarantee from the design engineer to have someone on site and oversee the level and quality of construction. We will be involved in making sure and processing invoices and stuff like that, but it will not be a daily level of involvement.
And then my understanding is that, under this draft agreement, TESS has agreed to absorb all cost overruns beyond what's in this budget?
Yes.
So regarding that, thank you, I appreciate that information. I would, if we do enter into this sub-agreement, I would highly recommend that we consider making sure that TESS bonds us for at least 100% of the cost in case we have issues getting funding. We've already heard about the financial situation in the last fiscal year. I would highly recommend that we, we bond or get a lot of a credit for 100% or, you know, maybe 66% of it, so we just make sure that we have that money available to us. Now, beyond that, I just want to make a couple of higher-level comments here, which are consistent with what I've been saying right along, but I think, given the, I agree, councillor Archer, this is a very complex arrangement. In my mind, the question of the need for a left turn lane is not a question. You know, we've had, it was documented at application, it's been redocumented that we are in need of a left turn lane. To what extent and how it's designed, I'm sure is still up for question. The real question in my mind is who's going to pay for this? And I went back, if you read the contract zone agreement, which has been referenced already this evening, there's no reference in the, to the requirement of a left turn lane or to the city's commitment to cover any aspect of the cost of installing one if one is required within the contract. Now, clearly, I would not expect a left turn lane requirement to be part of a contract zone agreement, because the issue of requiring a left turn lane would be under the sole jurisdiction of the planning board, and under the city's, under the city's site plan review ordinance. As I read the current charter, the council abdicates all authority to review and decide on land use applications to the planning board. And the council has no authority to modify a planning board decision. So if we feel that this is a modification, then I would agree, we have some charter violation issues. I went back to the review of the site plan, the site plan review conditions, which were approved on June 19th, 2018, and the infamous condition that we question is a condition of approval number nine, and it's the one that says, as a condition of approval, the applicant will implement the innovative traffic management solutions as noted in the traffic impact study. The applicant will also conduct a post-development traffic impact study and analysis at the Simpson Road, Buxton Road intersection, and will submit the study and analysis to the planning department, which I believe there's been an effort to do that. Final sentence, if the analysis concludes that a left turn lane treatment is required at that intersection, which it is, the applicant will work with the city and MDOT to design and construct the required left turn treatment. Now, my interpretation of the word "work" is different than what's been spoken to this evening, because to work with the city and the MDOT does not imply that the city will bear the cost of construction. During the pursuit of land use approvals, every developer must work with the city on a variety of ordinance issues. Working with city staff is a common practice. It does not imply the city will be involved in using taxpayer funds to pay for aspects of the project. Although the planning board may have authority over the city council to define land use conditions of approval, only the city council has the authority to commit municipal funds. So to imply that we did is, I think, a stretch. Now, we brought before this body on October 16th a vote for the BPI, which we voted on, the application, anyway. I have personally spoken to many Sauk citizens, those who do not have a stakeholder interest in the Ecology School. And aside from the one I heard from tonight, I have not heard of, from anyone else who supports using taxpayer funds to assist in completing a development project, one in which the developer should be reasonably expected to bear. I'm going to take exception to a nonprofit is not a developer. And that's from my own personal experience. I was a commercial real estate lender for many years when I worked in that role at TD Bank. We had a very, very active real estate construction lending program, which I was a party to. We, I recall making at least 10, in a span of about four years, at least 10 significantly large real estate development loans to nonprofits. Many of them were housing, on a housing mission, but others were not. The YMCA, a couple of times comes to mind as a borrower. These were nonprofits who were developers. They had projects they needed to put together. They worked on project costs. They looked at funding mechanisms for those costs, and every possible aspect of that project was funded. So I sit here, and these are organizations, I'm telling you, as much as I respect, and I truly do, the mission of the Ecology School, these other nonprofits were doing marvelous things for the community, and at least as much, if not more, than what we've heard from TESS. So I, I just have a hard time looking at this project and coming up this short on something that was supposed to be funded by the developer, and then turn to my fellow taxpayers, both state and local, as councillor Hewitt has mentioned, and ask them to fund a project that should be, should have been funded by the developer. So when I was asked to vote on option two on October 16th, I voted no. I still firmly believe that assisting a land use developer, regardless of its nonprofit status, to help fund construction to satisfy a condition of approval that all our other developers in the city have historically been required to pay for themselves is totally inappropriate. So I will continue to vote no on this matter unless the burden of non-MDOT funding shifts entirely to the developer. Thank you.
Councillor Johnston?
Thank you. Just since Stackpole Creek Bridge came up twice or three times tonight, there's an important context there, which is that that was approved by a bond overwhelmingly by the citizens of Sauk. The subsequent funding also, I sat here in support of it, but the public participated in that. And it wasn't just the Simpson Road residents that, you know, advocated for the additional expenditure above and beyond the bond. So it's not apples to apples, once again. We're trying to, you know, take one subject and apply it to this, and it's not. That was truly public for public, if you ask me. It was paid for by the taxpayers, and it was a true public safety issue. I'm not qualified to tell you that, but certainly our fire department made it clear to us that if someone was having a heart attack on the other side of the creek, it was an issue. To councillor Hatch's point, I mean, regardless of the conditions that are on the ground today, as I've stated previously, as we've heard by many, this was a condition borne onto TESS at the site plan, based on their project, their development, call it what you will. We would not be here with a turning lane regardless if it was not for that development. We would just continue on the way we have. Nobody would have any traffic counts, because, as it's been also indicated, and I've sat here and spoke to this, I've never once in 10 years on traffic safety, ever, had anybody come forth and say, hey, we really need a turning lane at the Simpson Road. Again, to other councillors' points, people are watching. Over the last, what did I say, two years since 2022, I've had numerous taxpayers, residents of Sauk, contact me, leave me messages, stop me in the shops and say, hey, I support how you stand on that turning lane. They're not connected to the Ecology School. Those are our citizens that we are elected to represent. Again, to the point of site plan requirements, for me, really, at the core of this, for me, is the precedent we are setting. And that's what, honest to God, it terrifies me, because I've been here long enough, as I've stated, to see issues come time and time again, where it's like, oh, well, if we had done that a little bit differently, maybe we wouldn't be here today. And now, we're taking such a giant leap, where we're saying, because, I guess, we like you, we're willing to participate and fund something that every other developer that's been before us has done on their own. Okay? That's troubling from the perspective, as just this past week, I have to clean up the language, but I spoke to one developer that said, why the link did I spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on a sidewalk if you're going to approve, you know, this turning lane? Are we all prepared to sit here, or future councillors prepared to sit here and assist every single request that comes for, before us, because I guess we like them? Or are we going to play winners and losers? Because that's a phrase I've thrown out often up here, because I oftentimes feel that's where we're stuck, winners and losers. It's not something I want to be a party of. You know, the prior BPI that's been thrown out there, the lumber company, again, not apples to apples whatsoever. That addressed an issue that was a decade long at the Flag Pond Road. It impacted everybody that travels US Route 1, so it was easy to get behind. This impacts an area that I would be willing to bet that the vast majority of Sauk residents, perhaps many of you seated up here, had never gone down the Simpson Road prior to this being before us. That's, that's the norm. I mean, people ask me all the time, where's the Simpson Road? Exactly, because it's in the far corner of rural Sauk. So, you know, as we've indicated, we've got people that have died from pedestrian accidents, and maybe that's why I'm a bit passionate about this, because time and time again, I'm sick and tired of seeing it. I'm sick and tired of the downtown, just, again, lip service, year after year after year, we're going to invest the money, and miraculously, we can find $309,000 or whatever it is. I guess we need to sit back and really sharpen these pencils and figure this out, because I look at this budget, and we're spending money on the Lund Road property or wherever else. Well, I guess it's time for me to start taking back and spending it where I think it's actually appropriated, not where, I guess, we've determined somehow magically it belongs. I don't know. I voted previously, I think, two, three, four times on this now, it seems like, you know, to councillor Archer's point, I feel like it's that spinning wheel of death on the computer screen. But at the same time, I still do have those concerns that have been addressed at the podium tonight or through subsequent or previous letters when it comes to compliance issues. And that, you know, we can sit there and say, well, we interpret the site plan a certain way, and I agree, it's not for me to interpret the way it is, but there are elements of compliance with the contract zone that I'm uncertain if, if TESS is in compliance with. Why would I continually move forward when I don't know if they're meeting those requirements? I've never received that, an indication that they are in compliance. I've also, again, as I stated, have concerns about whether or not those site plan amendments should have come to council. I don't know. I'm just telling you that from prior experience, we did have examples where they did come to council. So personally, I would like that cleaned up first before we move forward with funding this, if council decides to do that. I don't, I don't know if there's support for that. I know that councillor Archer was considering a table and motion, but I'll move forward and make a motion to table.
Councillor Johnston, that's a motion to table?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, councillor Johnston has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Archer. Roll call vote, councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Parks?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
No.
Councillor Berman?
No.
Councillor Hatch?
Yes.
Councillor Hewitt?
Yes.
And councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes five-two. Item has been tabled. Okay, guys, please keep your claws down.
So, Your Honor, just an inquiry, if I might. Staff has no direction on what the council wants as a result of this tabling motion.
Unfortunately, with the table, we're not allowed to discuss, so we would have to untable it and bring it back.
Well, no, I'm just looking at a point of personal privilege here as a, as a city administrator. You know, I, I, let me, if I might. It's fine to table, I have no problem with that, but there was a lot of discussion relative to, you know, there are things that need to be done. I don't know what those things are, and I don't know how I'm going to bring this back to, to remove from the table at this point. If you want to, if we want to take this offline sometime, we can talk about it, but... So how am I supposed to know what you want done as a city council?
I would say under your report or under council discussion, we can give you feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Then, tonight.
Yep, we can, because I know Counselor Johnston, you went to...
I thought it was very clear.
Yep.
I, I, maybe I missed it.
No, but two, if I may, to Counsel Archer's point, though, yeah, once we get to the discussion point, we can just put up, you know, bullet points on what we, you know, what talked about, and therefore, it's all taken care of. I mean, I mean, I'd be a fan of just untabling, talking about it now, then, you know, re-tabling since we know the votes are there, and we know what the vote's going to be, though, but six and one-half dozen the other, you're the mayor, whatever, however, however it works.
Yep, I would prefer to bring it back in the discussion.
There you go.
And then if somebody has a particular point to have discussed or brought back, we can put it in that. Okay, so that now takes us to item C, and that's one reading, sale and development of real estate, chapter one, chapter 81 dash 12, chapter 81 for 12 School Street, map 31 lot 7. And that is Counselor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The 12 School Street property was built as a church for many years. It was Saco's United Methodist Church in 2001. The property was sold to a private party, and since that time, the parcel had been used for housing and a customary home occupation. In August 2019, the city of Saco bought the property in hopes of rehabilitating it as a Parks and Rec teen center. At that time, the level of work needed to convert to a teen center was evaluated and considered manageable. The building has remained empty since 2019. The cost of the renovation has increased substantially and is no longer considered viable for use as a teen center. Chapter 81 was initiated with the recommendation to sell the property. A public hearing was held on July 24, 2023, in which the council approved to provide an RFP for 90 days with a due date of February 5, 2024. The city received one bid from Quality Housing Coalition, it's a 501(c)(3). An executive session was held on February 26 and April 1, 2024, to discuss the RFP, with no formal action taken. The bidder was Quality Housing Coalition, the price for a dollar, and the purpose was six deed-restricted affordable one-bedroom units on the first floor. The second floor would be available as a meeting program service provision space for the building's residents, local nonprofits, and the city of Saco. Two apartments would be available for newly hired city staff in need of housing. On April 3, the Economic Development Director requested a legal opinion regarding chapter 81 process for compliance. The following findings are from City Solicitor, Tim Murphy. First, the council engaged in evaluation process set out in chapter 81, section B. The council did authorize the issuance of an RFP following a required public hearing, see chapter 81, section B4. I take this to mean, the public hearing requirement of chapter 81 has been met, the council heard the public's views and made decision to issue an RFP. Now the council's reviewing the RFP response. It can go into executive session to do this. At the RFP is essentially a business negotiation. Once it is satisfied as to the negotiation and its terms, it should come out of executive session and publicly discuss its options, but one presumes they would decide to instruct the city administrator to enter into an acceptable purchase and sale agreement for the task, for the sale of the property. They do not need to vote for another public hearing, that requirement has been met. Be it order, the city council authorizes the city administrator to enter into a purchase and sale agreement, negotiated terms with Quality Housing Coalition of Real Estate for 12 School Street. I move to approve the order.
Second.
Motion has been made by Counselor Archer, second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. So I do appreciate Attorney Murphy's response and staff efforts ensuring we are in compliance with chapter 81, and certainly based on the way the current chapter is written, I'm not going to refute the process, though I will say that for those of us that were present, I do think this is a little bit murky in the sense that in March of 2023, we had a motion before us, we removed the sale of the property, I believe it was my motion, sent it to a workshop, we workshopped it, it then came, I don't remember the results of that workshop, but then it came back in July of 2023 where we voted to retain said property. Then, some weeks later, we decided to go into RFP. So, again, I'm not refuting the process, I just, this seems to be a glaring issue there for at least me, in the sense, or I would hope all of us, in the sense that we finalized that chapter 81 process, and we said we were going to retain it. We told the public we were going to retain it. Then we entered into some level of negotiations via RFP. We are now not bringing that back to the public to have the public weigh in on the proposal before them. The proposal that the public hearing heard was just to sell the property, right? So, again, for a future day, I think this needs to be amended because we're here with one reading, selling a property for $1, something that all the, all the previous language said we were selling it for $200,000. That's the last the public heard. So again, going back to transparency purposes, it's not, it's very wonky to me. And in fact, it took me a while to figure out and parse through and figure out what we had done. And with that aside, I'm supportive overall of this proposal. I think that we've come to as good an outcome as I think we could, and I think we're, you know, addressing affordable workforce housing. I think that's probably all of our goals, so I am supportive of that. And even if it means I'm giving away the property for a dollar, I think it's to a good cause. At the end of the day, I can justify that to the taxpayers in the sense that it's a need, a true need presently. The only question I have is, what's the impact of the budget in the sense that for several years now, we've been budgeting $200,000 for sale of as revenue?
And it's now... That wasn't included in the revenue for this budget, was it, Jerry?
Okay, because in years past, it had been...
Yeah, I took it out. So, let me just, if I might, Your Honor, let me just make a comment because I think it's important to note that there are two apartments that are going to be made available for city employees, which we all know that we need to have some kind of ability to attract and retain city employees in the area of public safety and also in the public works area. I might, if you look at, if the pro forma is available and the $294,000 per unit cost, if you take that and look at it, then you're really talking about the city getting some kind of return on its investment of almost $600,000. Would the city put up this kind of money to, to add to apartments for city, you know, employees? We will have a guarantee to have those apartments made available at an affordable price. It will be in the hands of the city to determine, you know, the length of time people can stay in those. Something we'll discuss with the council, but this is just the first of many, I'm sure. There's, there's, the housing issue is one that is a very daunting issue for all of us, but we, as the city, have been talking about internally relative to how do we retain, how do we attract? Also, there's other areas that we want to look at going forward, such as veterans and other types of housing that may be necessary. So I would just say, I would just note that, you know, each unit, this developer's going to be putting in $294,000 to each unit, and the city's going to have two units reserved for itself, so I wouldn't take the position that we're selling it for nothing. I would take the position that we're getting a benefit of almost $600,000 for those apartments, and then they could be used for our employees.
Just to clarify, if it came off as I was saying that we were getting, we were selling it for a dollar, that was not my intent whatsoever. I'm staying, stating that I support this, and I'm trying to tell the public that, because they will perceive it as you're giving it away for a dollar, I'm recognizing that...
So my comments, Counselor, was not aimed at you, it was aimed at the public to say, here we are.
I think this is a win-win.
It is, exactly, exactly.
Counselor Hewitt?
Just two quick questions. Can the deed be written in such a way that if the developer sells it after they complete it, you know, say, a year in or whatever, that we continue to maintain the workforce housing? And has affordable, as far as affordable, been defined?
Well, that, of course, is always the question, but they will be applying for grants, and I'm sure, and I'll ask Trace Director, just trying to come down and maybe speak to that issue, because there are multiple grants that are going to be applied for here. So I, I assume that there might be some definition of affordability, but I don't want to say that for a certainty.
The pro forma, again, this can change, the pro forma can change, but it's listing a one-bedroom, what they're going to charge for rent is $1,150. That is affordable.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I mean, this can be changed, don't get me wrong, but what's presented is...
Good evening. Tracy Deschard, Inspector of Economic Development. When they go after the grants, there will be stipulations as far as within the grant that they're not going to be able to sell these properties. One of the things that they want to guarantee to the city is that we would get that same rate, the employees would get that same rate as affordable housing, and they're going to have to keep within that price range anyways in order to qualify for those programs. Because that's usually a stipulation as far as with, you know, when it comes to these grant programs, that you just can't up and sell it, and somebody else is going to come in and raise the rent, and presume that that's what you're concerned about. You can't do that with these grants. These are federal dollars.
My only one concern is that we retain the right to the two properties in perpetuity.
Well, we'll discuss that with them.
Counselor Johnston?
Yeah, well, I think Counsel Archer hit upon where I was going, but I also just, because oftentimes I find that a lot is lost here in the narrative, that, in the packet, so for the, for the public's benefit, as Counselor Archer indicated, the second floor space, that was a hot topic item for many members of the public, that will be retained in some fashion as far as for public use. So, again, maybe this is a win-win-win outcome.
And again, I think that's a, that is something that is important to the community so that it's available. It's a, as you said, a win-win.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else, any last minute comments or questions? Okay, roll call vote, Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero. Okay, that now takes us to item nine, and that is new business. We do have four department presentations this evening for the fiscal year 2025 budget. That's starting with the fire department, and I believe we have Chief Duras with us this evening. Council, want to take a two-minute break before we start?
That would be lovely.
Okay, sorry, Chief, we're going to take a two-second, two-minute break.
You scared us away.
Okay, welcome back, everybody, at 8:50. Sorry for that little delay, but I saw everybody getting up and realized they needed a break. So, okay, so to recap, we do have our first department meeting this evening, and that is the fire department. And welcome, Chief Duras.
Thank you. Mayor, City Council, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present the fire department's FY25 budget. The fire department's budget can be found on page, beginning on page 93 in the budget So currently, we're at full staffing. That's four shifts of 10, four administrative chief officers, 20 on-call firefighters, and one administrative assistant. So that's the numbers. But what we really are is a great group of dedicated professionals who have chosen public service and work hard every day to deliver the highest quality of fire suppression and emergency medical services to the residents of Saco. I'm personally thankful for the great work that these people do each and every day. Here are some of our highlights over the last year. Our response data is all based on the calendar year for consistency in reporting with the state fire marshal as well as the United States Fire Administration. So our emergency responses in calendar year 2023 were 4,254. 3,297 of those were medical emergencies. We responded to 31 building fires. They did not all occur in Saco. These do include our mutual aid numbers. To be classified as a building fire requires a loss of property or contents to fire, regardless of whether or not it's reported to the insurance company. We continue our efforts in public education to include schools, businesses, and civic We have five new employees who are finishing up their required orientation and probationary training programs. And over the past few months, weather-related events and disasters have challenged, have really challenged our department. We still make time to be engaged with the community through events such as our open house, the drive-through trick-or-treat, which has been a huge success, and the call division keeping alive the 40-year tradition of lighting Central Fire Station and the visit from Santa during the Thanksgiving holiday. So we are still seeing a steady increase in incident volume. In a 10-year comparison, we responded to 800 more incidents in calendar year 23 as compared to calendar year 2014. These numbers represent everything we do to include medical emergencies and building fires, but also water emergencies, motor vehicle accidents, alarm activations, grass brush and woods fires. So that's everything we do in that number. We are currently staffing two ambulances 24 hours a day, averaging almost 10 calls per day. Emergency medical services remains to be 70% to 75% of our total incidents. Revenue from ambulance calls is also on the rise, with a projected $1.1 million in revenue expected this year. The ambulance revenue account has a healthy balance and can assist in supporting the needs Our other revenue stream is the fire and EMS impact fee. The current balance for the current fiscal year is over $58,000. This fund is a little smaller than the ambulance revenue, but is used to support the necessary capital projects. Last year, we were able to upgrade the traffic light preemption, which allows responding emergency vehicles to control the traffic signals for safe passage through intersections. The original units were more than 20 years old and lacked the technology that is currently available. We also have new technology in our new records management system, like the heat map shown. This map provides us with current data for sound decision-making and policies, procedures, and planning. This particular map shows us where incidents are occurring, and that downtown is still where 60% of our incidents originate. But it also shows an increase in call volume along the Route 1 North Corridor. Some staff achievements. We are committed to the professional development of our current staff. In the past year, we've had two members obtain paramedic certification and licensing, two obtain advanced DMT certification and licensing, and one member complete firefighter one and two certification. Additionally, we have four current members scheduled to complete paramedic training in the next few weeks. Last year, we were able to support three members at the National Fire Academy in Emmitsburg, Maryland, to attend the Women in the Fire Service Training Program. Other areas of professional development include EVs, electric vehicles, lithium battery emergencies, marine responses, hazardous materials, and firefighter health, safety, and wellness. We've worked with the Catholic Charities of Maine to extend fire safety education to the asylum-seeking residents currently living on the industrial park road. This included a fire safety pamphlet that was written in multiple languages. And we have achieved premier blood partner status with the American Red Cross, which is recognition as a high-contribution blood drive sponsor. We hosted four blood drives in 2023, collecting a total of 116 units of blood. Thank you. We continue to focus on the recommendations of the comprehensive assessment of the Saco Fire Department that was conducted a few years ago, planning for the future, and succession planning as we prepare for staff turnover through retirements and the recruitment of future employees of the Saco Fire Department. Our newest program, Field Training Officer, is intended to assist new employees as well as those who are obtaining higher EMS license level in skill development and navigation through the main EMS system. We do have some budget requests from fund balance and capital requests to purchase or upgrade existing equipment. The first one is a floor scrubber. The floor scrubber is used to clean the apparatus bay floor, as well as can clean the hard tile floor in the administrative office area. The new floor cleaning machine will replace a 13-year-old floor cleaner that was purchased as a used unit back in 2011. The current unit has several maintenance issues, and replacement parts are hard to The request of the addition of two new firefighters in the third quarter of the fiscal year is consistent with the recommendations in the assessment, as we look to provide adequate daily staffing to address increases in incident volume. And interoperability with our mutual aid and public safety partners has become difficult due to improvements made to their systems not compatible with our system, which essentially is a 40-year-old analog radio system. These new portable radios will allow us to communicate on all platforms, the 800 digital, as well as UHF and VHF frequencies. This request is for a multi-year replacement program. Hopefully, future budgets, we can keep it going. And that's the end of my presentation.
Great. Thank you. Any questions or comments for Chief Duras? Councillor Johnston?
Thank you. For starters, thank you for the presentation and all that you and the fire department do. And yesterday, we had a structure fire. Clearly, I'm not qualified to talk about it, but it looked significant. And by all accounts, I have friends that live in the neighborhood, it sounded like our fire department, not surprisingly, did an upstanding or professional job. So thank you for that. And I also want to make note that it didn't, I didn't, it didn't lose sight on me that we maintained our Christmas decorations when some of our neighbors didn't. It was something that many said to me, you know, why is our partners across the river not decorating?
Thank you for that.
You guys do an outstanding job, and it does mean, you know, a lot to the community, particularly some of our youngsters, like my children. The only question I have, obviously, we have two staff requests in the report or in the budget. Where are we in relation to that MRI report? Are we right on target, below? I'm just curious for a few years.
We're a couple of budgets behind, but we're okay.
In headcount, how many?
We're a couple. In headcount, we should have already completed all four of those positions. And we also had in that assessment, looking at the Route 1 corridor, as far as providing a station, which would have required some additional staffing on a third engine company, I think, the way it's written.
All right. Well, thank you for that. I recently re, I guess I had time on my hands, I reread that report, and I find it, and I've said this before to you, Chief, I appreciate it as a councillor, and I find it remarkable how on-point we have been with that report. I mean, many of the things in there that we've addressed up here, such as the sprinkler systems, that was highlighted in those reports. So I just appreciate that we've, you know, stuck to the report, and it certainly makes it easier, from my standpoint, to support additional staff that's clearly, you know, after a study has been done, is needed. So just thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you so much, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the list this evening, we do have the Public Works Department, and we have Director Fox with us. And you'll also transition right into the capital program, correct?
Yeah.
So Public Works and Capital.
Yeah. So I'll get this slideshow set up. Also, Travis Moore, Deputy Director, is joining me. That's to tap me on the shoulder, smack me in the back of the head if I say a number wrong, and I can correct that for you on the spot. So we'll do operating budget first, pause, questions, comments, discussion, before we move on to capital. So FY25 budget, Public Works operating budget, you can turn to page 130 of your budget book. And before we get into the numbers for FY25, I'll just touch on a few recaps from the current year or the past year. We've seen a lot of statistics by department on numbers of sort of statistics of what we do, and I thought, you know, pulling a record of our online work order system, I think over the years, we've relied on it more, and it's a good thing, because we pretty much have the same staff managing a growing community and a growing list of requests by our residents and citizens and visitors, as well as other departments. So in the past year, we average over 1,000 requests. In the past year, we had 1,361 requests through this system. I encourage councillors, residents, anyone to use it, because it is a way to report a problem with anything that we would take care of as a city, but very public works dominant list of tasks in that program. But it gets emailed immediately to the frontline supervisors that can actually correct the work. Contacting the Public Works Director is not the most efficient way to get something addressed within our department. It's probably the least efficient way to get something directed in our department. So what I noticed in looking at the last year's results are, due to the funding that you've provided over the last several years on capital assets, we have, we have great equipment, our roads are in great shape, our sidewalks are in good shape. So infrastructure-related work orders are kind of trending down, which is great. You know, we're not getting as many calls and having to stop a planned project to go address a failing piece of infrastructure or a pothole or anything like that. What we are seeing is, and I think everyone around town notices it, we're a growing community. We're growing quickly, and so are the communities around us. So we have a lot more visitors, we have a lot more traffic, we have a lot more people. So requests for trash and recycling, cart delivery to homes, even requests to understand how our trash and recycling works, requests for signage in neighborhoods to regarding pedestrian or vehicle safety, even debris in the roadways as there's more cars traveling our roadways. So any call for sort of service that isn't related to fixing an asset, we're seeing increases in those. And I think that's consistent with what we all experience in our daily lives in Saco. Some 2024 achievements. We have ongoing studies like the Transportation Master Plan. We're working closely with our neighboring Old Orchard on an I-195 Ocean Park Road, sort of new transition on how cars get to and from Route 1 in Saco and how cars enter Old Orchard. Primarily the summer traffic concerns for them, slowing traffic down into their corridor. But there is an overlap with Saco that we're really happy to be at the table for, and we're leveraging some really great study results out of that. Traffic management improvements have mostly been related to new traffic signals. So Flag Pond Road has come online, Route 112 at Jenkins Road, we're just waiting for temperatures to warm up enough that we can put the new pavement down on Route 112 and get that signal active. We get a lot of questions about that, but that is, that is coming very soon, May, you know, in the next month, that'll come online. We continue to make stormwater quality improvements within the Goose Fairbrook watershed. We turned an old detention pond in the industrial park that collects a lot of public and private drainage area to a updated, modern gravel wetland to improve stormwater quality. And we've leveraged a number of external funding mechanisms through our involvement in regional agencies, through our involvement in Greater Portland PACs. We have $100,000 going towards an Old Orchard Road paving project. Another $200,000 will be going that we secured this year. Next summer, we'll put a final pavement treatment on Beach Street, and we'll be looking to implement complete streets along that section with bike lanes, narrower travel lanes, and a more neighborhood feel to our main corridor to the beach. So those funds will be expended. And then we are chasing $300,000 worth of reimbursements related to the January storms through FEMA. Leveraging and documenting and sticking with the process to get $300,000 from FEMA is much like us carrying out $1 or $2 million worth of local improvement projects. It's a lot to comply with the federal, the federal requirements to get that money reimbursed. It's a, it's a lot of staff time, but, so we're doing that for the second year in a These are tables directly from your budget book, so you'll see sort of a, you know, the year-to-year maintenance of effort that goes into just continuing to provide the exact services that we provide last year in the coming year. Common stresses to that maintenance of effort that can sometimes increase costs. On the operations side, it often comes down to what we're paying for road salt and winter operations. Even though road salt jumped from $65 to $78 a ton, we didn't necessarily transfer that into a budgeted number. We tried to recognize the recent patterns of somewhat milder winters, but I don't want any of us to think that we're done. We will see 100 inches of snow again. We will get a bad winter. These things come in cycles, but we do try to recognize trends and reduce, reduce that burden on the tax whenever we can. So we didn't recognize the full increase that that would have been, however, it did go up slightly. Asphalt is costing more for paving and solid waste contracts. Those are long-term contracts that go up 3% to 5% a year, both on the collection side and on the tipping fee side. So you can see these contracts add up. They're, you know, 30% of our budget base pay for our 42 employees still makes up the largest single percentage of our overall budget. What you do see, that you haven't seen in the Public Works budget the last couple years, is a change during the city administrator's consideration of this budget, and we greatly appreciate as a department and as a city, the administrator putting forward a deputy city engineer position. I think, you know, looking back, I certainly could have put this in a year ago. We've just, we're funding our capital plan at a really high level. We are a growing community. Our current city engineer, actually, before he came here from the private sector almost a decade ago, was actually providing third-party private review of all development projects. Now we have even more development projects. He's doing that as an in-house employee in addition to all of our engineering compliance, stormwater permitting. He's truly one of a kind, and we need to prepare and start some succession planning. It's not going to be an easy void to fill when he leaves. He's not retiring in the coming year or anything, but it's getting closer. And between the backlog of projects, the need to stay engaged with our beach management planning planning and the Army Corps project and a number of other large projects, it's time to have a second person in the engineering office to make sure that we can reduce the backlog of projects that we fund and get them delivered to the street quicker. So greatly appreciate that addition. We don't, we take any headcount request very, very seriously and we do it only when we feel is absolutely necessary. And I think this is key, key timing, if not maybe a year later than we probably should Only other stressors to the, oh, the other area of our budget that did change a little more considerably than in the past is within the garage. I think we've, the efficiencies of our new building, the age of our, the overall great condition of our municipal fleet has helped us defer a number of cost increases, but it's just getting too much. In our vehicle repair parts that we purchase for all city vehicles across all departments, we're seeing increases of up to 50% just over the last two or three years on just common, the top 10 or 20 things that we buy for vehicles over and over and over. We're just seeing a 50% increase in costs. So that is finally, after a few years of stretching the efficiencies as far as we can, it's finally starting to hit some of these line item requests. So those are within the budget as well. And a little bit of an increase on traffic signal. We're adding traffic signals around the city. We're looking for them to do, be more efficient and do more adaptive technology use to move more cars through the intersection. So some of those contracted services are going up a little bit. We still take care of the majority of that in-house, though. So with all of this, with the, you know, the funding put before you and the potential staffing change that the administrator supported, we're looking to work hard on this Transportation Master Plan with our consulting team that's been selected. That's a major effort that's going to shape our future selection of projects, shape the contribution of private development to those projects. So we're anticipating putting a lot of time into that to have it be a meaningful, usable document. It's going to require a huge staff lift on top of the consulting efforts that we're putting forward. MS4 stormwater compliance continues to be an issue across the region and we have to be at the table to make sure that we can carry out what the state and federal requirements are that are going to come down to us under the new stormwater permits. A lot of push for low-impact development standards and those are hard to navigate and implement on every development project. So it takes a lot of staff time. A real staff focus on being present on regional boards and commissions so that we are at the table for every funding discussion. It becomes a great rooms to recruit and interact and, you know, grow as a staff, but also just really keep putting Saco's best foot forward so that we can be on the front end of recruiting people from public and private sector. We're working with Southern Main Community College on an intern program and we, you know, we've brought in interns to work in our garage, which is our hardest area to find staff right now. Some of the things we do at Public Works are not conducive to what the workforce is moving towards. So we have to be really innovative and creative to find people that can come in and energetically provide the tasks that we know this city needs. So adapting to a changing workforce and just being present regionally is an important focus in the coming year. And lastly, you will not see it funded in this budget because it's kind of been something coming about just during the time that we had already submitted the budget for next year, but I think we'll have some robust discussion maybe at the end or in the first quarter of the next year and look for your support for a formal beach management plan that allows us a concrete path forward on how we're going to take care of our coastal assets, but also allows us to leverage, if we can formalize that beach management plan, I think we can leverage more federal funding when these disasters hit. So we've already been in talks with our general engineering consultants that have marine resource and development disciplines within their firm. So we will have a scope and a potential draft table of contents and what the different sections of that beach management plan will be. So we're working on it. You just don't see an actual allocation in the capital plan yet for that. We're still getting the proposals on what that might cost for each section of it. That'll be coming to you this year as well. So that's all for formal talking points, but happy to address or dive into any aspect of the operating budget and then we'll move into capital planning.
Thank you, Director Fox. Any questions on this first part with the department budget? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McNeil. Just not a question, but just a comment. I appreciate the forward thinking, particularly with staffing and succession planning. I think that's excellent and I think it's a good step for all of us to be working on. Just a curiosity question, the Transportation Master Plan, is there like a projected completion date? We weighs off on that or just educate me a little bit?
We, when we put that forward with planning, we had some discussions between Public Works and Planning and we figured for what we're looking to get out of it, I would not be surprised if this is a multiple-phase thing. So what we put out to bid and what we're looking to get for the base Transportation Master Plan, we're looking at a year. We were hoping to get that completely signed contract, sort of kickoff meetings in December. Those link, by the time we actually formalized that contract, went back and forth, got it all, ironed out what we wanted them to provide and made adjustments to the scope of work. It was more like January, February lingered into March. So we're just kicking it off now, but I think we're going to look to accelerate some areas of it so that we can utilize it in next year's capital planning efforts. But it probably won't be finalized and I would not be, just to set the table for it, I would not be surprised at all if we're looking at another phase to sort of hone in on some corridors or some areas or, you know, dive a little deeper into some of the major improvements the year after. But I think we can start use it as a planning tool by this time next year when we're making budget decisions.
Is it safe to assume that there will be ample opportunities for public input in the process?
Yep. Public engagement, big thing that we were looking for is for a team that has demonstrated that they bring the public in and utilize today's technology to do it as well. So online surveys, in-person meetings, you know, kind of touch everybody's favorite method for communicating what they'd like Saco to be.
Great. Anyone else? Okay, moving on.
All right. So we'll move on to capital planning. The city, you know, city staff brings you a five-year capital plan each year. The out-years of the plan certainly, you know, certainly are flexible and we hone those each year. But, you know, so we start with year two of last year's plan, see if those projects are still relevant, effective, best use of taxpayer dollars, and then we go from there. So one thing we start with every year is what do we have? What are we taking care of with this capital plan? So I'm proud to share with you, this is actually the sort of icon showing you the different asset categories with their replacement costs and the number of capital assets in each of the categories. There's a lot going on on this slide, but what's really nice is we have made continuous improvement efforts to capture all of this in Munis, our accounting software. So we're utilizing those modules that help us keep track of assets and track their, where they are in their lifecycle and what their costs are for replacement and update all of these. So we can use all that data to make sure our insurance policies are up to date and covering all of our infrastructure, to make sure we're giving you decision-making numbers of, you know, so this tells you we have $321 million worth of physical assets in the city. Those are things that are gonna, anything that's gonna last more than 10 years and cost more than $10,000 to kind of put in perspective is a capital item. So from computers to vehicles to drainage pipe to, this does not have sewer. This is, so the wastewater is kept separate. So when you see the wastewater budget, that deals with capital as well. So this is all non-sewer-funded assets across the city. That $321 million, we don't always have the staff available to update those numbers, but we've, we try to keep that as up to as we can. It wasn't that long ago, we were at $250 million. We went across all assets, looked at what the replacement values are as costs increase. So $321 million is the best number we can sort of give you now. And the 1,400 assets is, in some cases, it's individual vehicles. In other cases, it's groups of sizes of drainage pipe under the ground. So there's a lot of different ways we look at it, a lot of different software packages we use to provide what the condition of those different assets are. But it's come a long way in the last five years or so. These are, this is a table that's in your, that's in your budget document. I'm sorry, I did not start this section by saying page 43 in your budget book is where the capital plan starts. So what you see here is just a breakout of, each color represents a different asset category. So we have facilities. When you see right-of-way or R O W infrastructure, it basically means everything from where the front of people's properties end and the city right-of-way starts. So sidewalks, curb, traffic signals, anything that fits within that sort of road and sidewalk area, street lighting, that would be right-of-way infrastructure. Vehicles and equipment, that's across all departments, ambulances, police cars, plow trucks, excavators. And grounds would be the beaches, the riverfront, the parks and street trees. So, you know, what Ryan and his crew and over at Parks and Rec take care of for street trees. And then utilities is pretty much everything underground for drainage and traffic, I'm sorry, traffic signals are included in the utilities, not the right-of-way, I believe. Some highlighted projects for 2025, there's probably 45 different line items within the 2025 budget plan. Some of those are representing groups of projects, like you'll see interior finishes for facilities. That could be anything from replacing ceilings or walls to painting to new flooring. Exterior finishes for facilities would be across all facilities and include things like roof, windows, that type of siding. Lund Road Storage Facility, that's one of the projects listed. These are sort of the highlight of the higher-dollar individual projects I tried to include in this slide. Lund Road Storage Facility is a facility that we inherited on a tax-acquired property back in the very early 2000s. We did a brownfield cleanup of the site, environmental cleanup. It needed extensive environmental work. We leveraged a lot of federal funds for that. What we got in the end was the ability to reuse the property and it has 12,000 square-foot building that was from the early 70s and had been pretty beat up under the previous uses. But we just utilize it for dry storage of off-season equipment. So we have millions of dollars of equipment that get to sit inside a covered, dry place instead of outside in the elements and we swap out winter and summer equipment. So we've never put any money, significant money into that building since we went through the brownfield process and cleaned up the property. So that was in 2007. That building just needs some foundation work, some roof repairs, some siding, the overhead doors, it's sort of, it's seen better days and its replacement value would be in the millions of dollars. So we have, I think, $325,000 or so in that. Rooftop DPW solar, something we always planned on doing someday. Everyone was excited about it when we built the building. I told everyone it was not in the original budget. Here it is. This is the first year that we've been able to comfortably put that in the capital plan. As you go down through grounds, we have downtown streetscapes, that's a TIF-funded program to improve lighting, sidewalks, benches, trash cans, that kind of stuff in the downtown area. Parks and Trail repairs, we fund every year. We have some major culvert replacements. One of them actually, we just need to fund and finish it. We tried to get grant money for it. We were not successful, but we do have ARPA funds remaining that have to be done, allocated or used by December. This project is to finish that off and take care of a very vulnerable, failing culvert out on Boom Road that just doesn't fall under a state transportation system to rise to the level of funding, to get, to leverage other funding mechanisms. And Main Street Gateway Project, we're looking to work with development funds and general fund and TIF funds to just sort of reimagine and bring forth a better approach from Bedford as you come into the downtown, coming up that hill with lane configurations, traffic signal, sidewalk lighting improvements. That's in funded for next year's budget, phase one of that. And vehicle and equipment, we just try to keep everything on anywhere from a 10 to 20-year replacement schedule. So our vehicle and equipment schedule is just right around the $1 million that it usually is. And those are some of the vehicles listed there, ambulance, fire and brush truck, a dump truck and some plow equipment, all replacements of existing infrastructure. I think this is pretty much the last one I have, but I just wanted to show the diverse funding that we utilize within the capital plan. It's not all general fund. We leverage, TIF is used, you know, TIF funds are used heavily for capital, which is what they're intended for and was a policy decision by the city years ago. We leverage as many grants as we can. This year's budget has $622,000 in grants. You can see out-years will have a lot more. That's ones that we queue up, we try for, we don't get them all. So by the time we come to the year that we're funding, those are ones that we've actually sort of landed or we see being leveraged in the coming year. Impact fees, developer fees, that's another category that we try to leverage. General fund bond payments, that's bond payments that we're making on projects that have already occurred. So that would be if we paid, if we did a road paving bond for a few million dollars 10 years ago, said we were going to pay for it for 20 years, that's, those are the ones that are remaining payments. The Public Works facility is included in that. General fund financing is a category that is basically our least purchase of city vehicles. So we do a short-term borrowing for like half or less of the life cycle of whatever we're buying and that helps keep that pretty flat year-to-year versus spikes when you buy, say, an expensive piece of equipment, like if you buy multiple plow trucks or something like that one year and not the next, that helps flatten that funding. So that is, it is a complex capital plan and that's certainly just an overview. So I'm happy to answer any questions people might have on capital.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any questions regarding the capital budget? Okay. Not seen any.
That's what happens when you have a good system.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the Assessing Department this evening. And Director Kearns.
Last but not least.
Making Sean stay in the back?
Come on up, Sean.
Come on, Sean, you don't get to visit us often.
I'm.
And Deputy Assessor McCarthy. All right, good evening, guys. Thank you.
Okay, so the Assessing Department, let me get my slides going here. First of all, good evening, Mayor and councilors and Administrator Bohenko. Thank you for having us. We're a small department, but we have a big job. So we have three full-time CMAs on our staff, which is really unusual for most assessing departments. So we have the three of us working, we have a great team. I can't tell you how much brain power we have and how lucky we are to have both Sean and Brooke and I working together. So the Assessing Department budget is on page 59, in case you want to follow. So what is it we do? We manage and analyze data for almost 9,000 parcels in the city. And that breakdown would be about 20% commercial and 80% residential. And it's been that way for at least, as far back as I can remember, more than 20 years. It hasn't shifted much. So with that 80/20 split, the value is about $700 million in commercial property and $3.2 billion in residential. So our current ratio is 92% of market value and that is due in part to us doing the So, our current ratio is 92% of market value, and that is due in part to us doing the statistical update last year. So, we aspire to keep our assessments at or above 92% of the full market value, and that market continues to be very active. So, the median home sale price in Saco for 2023 was $515,000. And the average home sale price in Saco for '23 was $465,000. And that, that number is up eight and a half percent from 2022. So, yeah, that's, that's big. The city continues to grow. In 2017, we had 8,411 parcels. Since then, we've averaged adding 75 new parcels a year, giving us about 8,888. That was as of April 1st, and we're continuing to add, I think we've added 30 more parcels since that date. So, and adding parcels means it's a split, so subdivisions, a property that splits off one lot, that's, that's how you create new parcels. So, what do we have going on right now? We have a personal property audit, and to my knowledge, the city's never conducted a, a business personal property audit. I don't think that any town has. The reason it's becoming popular, and Saco's one of the first to do it in Maine, is because there's finally an appraisal company that wants to do personal property. In the past, it was always just the assessing office had to come up with a person power to get out there, hit the pavement, go business-to-business, and it's a lot of staff time for about 1% of the city's total revenue. So, right now, we hired KRT Appraisal several months ago to perform, to perform the audit, and we have estimated 600 accounts, 600 accounts right now. So, the personal property audit includes an interior inspection of every business, listing all taxable items such as signage, furniture, computers, machinery, equipment, anything used in the operation of a business. And all of this is done in accordance with state statute. So, for last year, there was $50 million in personal property value or $740,000 in tax dollars, which again is about 1% of the budget. So, KRT Appraisal will, they will be complete with their project by July 25th of this summer, and the numbers that they come up with will be used in the FY '25 budget. So, we do anticipate an uptick in revenue. I don't know how much, but when you do an audit, you certainly do pick up value. So, then again, we have, the year seems to be all about personal property, residential and commercial, either audits or measure, list and photograph, or, or a complete commercial revale. So, coming for FY '25 is the residential inventory update. Last year, we, as you know, we did the statistical update, but this year, we awarded a contract to Vision Government Solutions to measure, list and photograph all residential properties in Saco. So, the timeline for this is, the commencement date is May 1st of this year. The data collectors will be in the field from June 20, of 2024 through June 1st of 2025. They'll be measuring, listing and photographing all residential properties. Then from October 2024 through June 21st, 2025, they'll be entering all the data. And by June 30th of next summer, they'll have the, they will wrap up the project and the results will be available and the, whatever, whatever data they come up with will be effective for the April 1st, 2025 tax year. So, that again will be for next year. And a complete description of, of not only this, this residential update, but the KRT appraisal and the commercial revale will be available on our website, so you, you can read more about it, as well as the companies will be doing public relation campaigns to make sure that everyone in the city's aware of who's gonna be where, when, and they really do a good job at reaching out to the public. So, so what's happening in the next fiscal year is, last month, we signed a contract with KRT Appraisal for the full commercial and industrial revale. The cost of that is for, is $90,000 and is in this budget. I think that's the only increase you'll see in our budget. And again, they'll begin their public relations campaign to get the word out in May, and again, it will take them over a year. We approximately have 430 parcels. So, they'll start in May with public relations and, and getting the word out, but they won't start going door-to-door until September 2024 and go through March of 2025. So, again, they'll be complete with the final work project July 21st, 2025, and their results will be for the tax year 2026. So, that's looking forward. So, we've got a lot going on this year and next year. And, and, you know, the purpose for all of this is to, the overarching goal for our department is to have fair and equitable assessments across the city for residential and commercial property. That is like our goal, that's what we want for everyone, and to that end, the audits and revales are necessary to achieve that goal. It's been a very long time since the city's done this, and it seems like we're just doing it now all at once, and that's, that's okay. That's all right with us. We're ready for it. So, yeah.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Councilor Johnston, then Councilor Hatch?
I have a simple question. The commercial revaluation, does that include apartment buildings?
That will be anything that's eight units and above.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. That was one of my questions, so thank you for that. On the personal property inventory, have you, is there a process? The accountant in me is coming into vogue here, and it's, you know, every tax return has a fixed asset schedule that supports a depreciation deduction on a business tax return. And one thing I think we've all come to realize, at least in my tax preparation and analysis work, is that businesses tend to love to build up their expenses, but maybe do some things with their income. So, my, my point is, is that that's a fairly accurate source document to inventory, and I used to do that when I had Winter Haven, I used to send my, I'd have my fixed asset schedule, and that's how I'd fill out my, my form.
That's what we prefer.
Good.
But we are, they are, we send out a 706 declaration to every business, and in that declaration, they're required to respond to us, every asset they have that is in use for the business, and they need to give us the year, how much they paid for it, and how many they have. We do the depreciation, and we also make that available to them. So, every year, they're required to give us the same list, whether there are new assets on it or things that have been deleted. What's good about doing the audit is the company is going door-to-door and actually visually looking at the assets and following up on that. So, they're gonna be matching up what they, the business submits to what they actually saw at the business. So, and, and also picking up new business that hasn't reported in the past.
I think this is gonna be an interesting exercise of one, one that's probably gonna produce some tax revenue.
I think so.
And we go back to the fairness and equity.
Exactly.
I think it's important that, that be as fair and equitable as possible, so.
Good. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Thank you for your presentation. Okay, so that concludes the items this evening, and we are on number item 10, and that is an administrative update. City Administrator Bohenko.
Nothing else to report, just would probably like to follow up on some of those issues we talked about as related to the BPI grant. I can review the tape, I mean, the video tomorrow, and if there's anything anybody else wants to add, feel free to do so, but I can review the video tomorrow.
Anything anybody wants to add real quick or comment on that? Councilor Hatch?
I don't know if it was, be clear in the, in the tape, but I would like some effort extended on establishing financial capacity of the applicant, and I would suggest that we address the full amount of the budget that's, that's being proposed here and recognizing that only one-third of it is likely to be relevant to the applicant, but I'm, I'm pretty much concerned about not only that window of money that we need, evidence of capability, but also any cost overruns, which are, you know, I don't know how likely that is to happen, but maybe.
So, you're probably referring to the 990?
Yeah, yeah, if I could, yeah. So, some, some, some effort in that regard.
Okay.
I'd like to know more about the outcomes. I kind of presided four or five solutions. Are there any more that I wasn't thinking of? So, the one where we put it all on them, what happens? What are the next steps? What are the, again, I'm, I'm looking at a financial capacity, and I think we're putting them in a position where they're not gonna be able to make it. What is next year look like? What are the consequences or benefits, kind of? Is what I'm thinking, if I summarize it.
I do my best.
And Councilor Johnston, were you looking for some kind of ruling on the planning board and if it adjusts?
I, I think Ms. Brown's letter to counsel from yesterday, along with the other one we received on Friday, overall summarizes my concerns. There's, but to add to it, there's other outstanding issue, they may not be, let me correct myself.
Right.
They might not be outstanding, but my issue with it is, as we move forward, I'd like to know that they're 100% compliant, whether it's, I mean, I, I heard some numbers thrown out tonight about 300,000, 350,000 of educational services provided. I don't know if that's accurate. Every time I seem to open an email a couple times a year, it seems as though we have members of the public chasing down city staff to figure out if that was adequately provided. I can tell you, my child has not received any of those services during their times at CK Burns, so it makes me question that whole process to begin with, as others have. And there's certainly other, you know, questions that have been raised about legal issues as, whether or not the contract zone needs to be amended. As I indicated, Park North, the, the language is clear there, at least in my opinion, I think it was previously of Tim Murphy's, that in that particular contract zone, every amendment had to come to council for approval. We haven't followed that process since 2019, that I'm aware of. I don't know if that's the same with this particular contract. I've looked at the language, it, you know, I could probably wrap myself into a pretzel convincing myself that maybe it does, but I'm just looking for clarity as, as we move forward. And anything else I can think of that I wrote down on several pieces of papers, I will be happy.
You mail it over.
To submit.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
That's good, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Gunn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To switch, switch things for a second, I think this kind of fell through the council's preview a couple weeks ago, though, because we were too busy with the budget, though, but I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the, a note on the passing of a former governor, Joseph Brennan, who died a couple weeks ago, the age of 89. Governor Brennan was the 70th governor of the state of Maine from 1979 to 1987. He was the son of Irish immigrants. He was born and passed away in Munjoy Hill, no more than three blocks away from when he got a start. And he was a, had a reputation as a fundamentally decent, hard-working and good man. In addition to being governor, he was also elected to Congress two times. And as a point of personal privilege, when I was six years old at the Cumberland County Fair, he was the first politician I ever met, and I was old enough to understand what it, what I, who he was and what that meant. And I was raised in a, in a home where civics and politics were considered part of the curriculum, and they were considered noble and honorable public professions, and I think we all, you know, whether you're a parent or you're a proud uncle like I am, we can all appreciate that when you're kids, if you want exposed kids to ideals and things that are important, you get them out there and you, and you educate them. And I can draw a straight line from meeting that very kind, very tall, for a man who was six years old, for a boy who was six years old, man into the public service that I carry out today and that I advocate for others to carry out today. So, my respect and condolences to his family, and may the governor rest in peace. Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to item 11, which is council discussion and comment. You jumped on it a little bit, that's all right. Any other discussion or comment? Okay, not seeing any, and that takes us to an adjournment. Roll call vote, excuse me, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Councilor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hewitt. Roll call vote, Councilor Archer.
Aye.
Councilor Parks.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Hatch.
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt.
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn passes 7-0, 9:47.